June 2nd meeting of the Gastonia City Council. And welcome and glad to have you here. We certainly are glad. I have had Laryngitis and there's hundreds of people that have enjoyed that, but any time a politician can't talk, you know, you're in trouble. But, but please bear with me. It's the attorney's fault, so we'll go from there. But we're glad to have everyone here and glad that you're here for the city. At this time, I would like to ask you to have a prayer with me, after which we'll have the pledge of allegiance to the flag if you would please stand with me. Before we do have the prayer, let me say, and I've said this before, that in my term, that we have, we're always in bereavement over the folks that have lost loved ones. And, and, you know, in between our meeting here and our meeting here. And of course, it's impossible to name them all, but we all feel the same way. We've all probably had that happen. And in this particular case, I think that it's perfectly, certainly, here to honor and remember Franz Holsher. Franz Holsher was an East Carolina guy down east, and a name like that, he could be from anywhere. But down east, he played football. He was, he was a sportsman all the way through, and I won't go into all of that, but he came to Gastonia to coach at Ashley High School, and then went on, and I just could never name all the things that he did. But one of the things that I will, one of the things that I will tell you is that he was mayor pro tem of the City of Gastonia and on the City Council for a good many years. He also was ultra-active in electric cities, and they know him very well. But we lost Franz, his wife Jean, same, same way, just a super person, down-to-earth, just wonderful to deal with. He lost her a little earlier, and now they're together. So I just wanted to say that, that we certainly are thinking of the, of the family. And they, two sons, and I've talked with them, and they are, they are very pleased with, with what was accomplished on this earth. Pray with me if you will, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege of being here tonight. We thank you for this glorious day. We do thank you for the rain. And Lord, we ask that you be with every member's family that's here tonight. We also ask that you be with those that are in, in the other way around, in Texas and others, that are, that are having terrible problems as far as the flooding is concerned, and maybe we can level this thing out before long. Thank you so much for everything that you do for us, and thank you for the City of Gastonia. In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Adam sees the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion here, sir.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Adam D.'s approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of April 21, 2015. All in, is there a motion?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Adam E., if I may, council, is, I have a letter congratulating Mr. Simon Towner on his accomplishment of Eagle Scout. If he would please join me down at the podium, please.
I'd like to read, uh, read this letter, if I could, as a, certainly a congratulations letter for Eagle Scout Simon Towner on Independence Way. Dear Eagle Scout Towner, on the, on behalf of the City Council of Gastonia, I would like to personally congratulate you on your accomplishment of Eagle Scout through your involvement and leadership in Boy Scout Troop Seven of the Piedmont Council, which meets at First United Methodist Church, Gastonia. Your dedication and hard work is truly commendable. And this is what I wanted you to really hear. This past summer, Simon went on a youth mission to Milwaukee. During a, a part of the trip, the youth spent a day working with a local artist, hmm, Munir Bahoudin? Is that close? Okay, alright. The, the youth made forty-one clay tiles representing their mission trip. When he returned from the mission trip, he contacted First United Methodist Church and received permission to install peace poles. Now, you, he created the peace poles by taking a six-by-six-by-eight wooden poles, placing a prayer for the church and the community behind the tile, and then setting the tile into the peace pole. He then mounted the poles into the ground at the First United Methodist Church Family Life Center, which is, of course, as you know, is a block that way. You have persevered in accomplishing your goal, and your efforts are much appreciated. Your thoughtfulness, creativeness made our community a better place to live, work, and play in the City Council, and I salute you, Simon, for your accomplishments and wish you continued success in the future. And I've signed that, and I'd like to congratulate you, sir. Wonderful.
I'd like to introduce your dad or anyone, and if you've got anything you'd like to say, certainly. Maybe tell us where you're in school, and, and where you may be going and so on, okay?
I know that. I'm not either. Well, your dad's here. He says he's not good at speeches, I said, "I'm not either." So, doctor? Come on up, sir.
Congratulations.
There we are.
Because I told you, hard work always pays off. Simon's a senior at Ashbrook. He's gonna graduate in a few weeks. And he is going to be part of Balloon Industries, part of their partnership program. He's got an internship for the summer, so he's gonna be doing that for four years, hopefully. Still working with the scouts and, well, hey. Hard work pays off. Really appreciate you all taking the time and having us here tonight. Glad. It's a real honor. Right?
Great. Thank you very much.
Simon, Simon.
Simon. Oh, that's, please, because they would like to. He's trying to grow a beard, y'all. Dr. Curlin, you check that out. Come on.
Congratulations. Great job.
Thanks, pal. Congratulations, buddy.
Good idea.
Okay, certainly proud of Simon for that and the hard work that, at, at the Methodist Church. There's, there's people there that really need some working on down there. Pastors are doing what they can. Yeah. Yeah. Well, I didn't call any names. Did you see all the people all of a sudden, just, mm-hmm, around, looking? Hmm. Lay down Presbyterian, huh? Okay. Public expression. Each person is limited to a total of five-minute speaking time, of which, of course, the, the council will not answer any questions. The first one is Philip Cherry, thirteen forty-four Westbrook Circle. Phil? There's cherries everywhere.
We multiply.
Yes, you do multiply. Wonderful.
Mayor Bridgman and City Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak before you this evening. I'm coming on behalf of the Gaston County Sports Hall of Fame in support of the current management at the Conference Center. For the past four years, we have had events at the Conference Center and two other events. In fact, we just honored former Mayor Earl Groves with the Hometown Hero, and I just wanted to express an appreciation for the staff and their professionalism, their courteousness towards us. We've, we've had events that are probably three to four hundred, and they've just done an outstanding job. And I understand there may be some discussion now about, this evening, about a new management team coming in, but I just wanted to voice from the committee of the Gaston County Sports Hall of Fame how pleased we are with the, the current staff there and what they've done. Now, I don't know internal affairs, I'm just speaking as a satisfied customer. And in fact, the reason I knew about this, we, they helped me resolve an issue today where we are having our banquet on June twenty-second with Roy Wim speaking, and it sold out. This is probably the fastest the event has sold out, so we needed maybe a few more spaces for individuals who are calling. And Lauren Braxton and Al Smith, they've kind of worked that out where we were able to accommodate maybe fifteen or twenty more people, so that just showed me their willingness to, to help, support our events, you know, not only in the past, but, but the current situation. And lastly, you know, we've had some pretty successful or prominent folks who have spoken at the banquet when we've changed venues to the Conference Center, starting with Ron Rivera. Who else was it? David Cutcliffe. Last year, we had Larry Fedora, and this year, we had Roy Wim. And each of those previous sponsors have emailed me or written me a personal letter thanking us on the wonderful job, not only our committee did, but what the Conference Center had done. The, in fact, David Cutcliffe said it was one of the finest banquets he has ever been to. And that, that meant a lot to our committee, and I've expressed that to Fred and those as well over the years. So in closing, I just want to recommend or commend the Conference Center on the great job they're doing. So, thank you.
Any questions of, yes, sir?
Let me comment.
Yes, sir.
You know, Phil, you know Roy Wim speaking, can NC State guys come?
Uh, you can, but, but no, you, you're gonna have to pay extra, we're sold out.
I used to go down to the Pink Store and get my ticket, and I hadn't gotten there yet. So you're sold out?
Yes.
You think anybody could find me a ticket somewhere?
Don't, maybe if you ask the right person.
I was planning to go. I go every year, so.
Well, you'll get a chance to see David Thompson there, too.
Oh, actually, that's great.
Okay. Thank you.
Phil, we, we did want to inform you that we have offered to sell the Conference Center to Cam Newton, and you won't believe the price. Thank you very much. The next, there's one more on the list. Candy Thomas, thirty seventy-five Drayton Hallway. Ms. Thomas, do you want to come up now, or do you want to wait until the, either way, you go ahead.
Wait, wait.
No, that's entirely up to, listen, you're, you're, you're Redbirds' daughter, you come on, you do what you want, you do what you want to do. He would. Go ahead.
I just wanted to give a little background, thank you, Mayor Bridgman and council members for letting me have this opportunity to speak, and just wanted to give my, sort of, some background on this image campaign that I read about in the paper this morning. I have had Thomas Marketing since nineteen ninety-nine, a local marketing firm in Gastonia. And back in two thousand and three, we were in, we worked hard with the Chamber and the Gaston twenty-twelve initiative. At that time, we developed half, a couple of dozen newspaper ads with Mike Sumner's firm's help, a campaign of billboards to be put around the Charlotte area, basically an image campaign to promote within Gaston County and surrounding area, all the good things that Gaston County offers. It was Gaston County, Take A Closer Look. At the time, the billboard campaign was gonna cost seventy-five thousand, and the Chamber was trying to get private funding, you know, to, to do that, which never happened, so the campaign died a slow death, well, a quick death, actually, because it never happened. But just wanted to give you some background on that. I really don't feel that taxpayer funds should be used for this. I'm not even sure that an image campaign would work. What we did with the newspaper, Dwayne McAllister donated Gazette ti, um, space for the ads and ran them, this was in November of two thousand and three, for probably six months or a year, I don't remember, like, there were two dozen ads. Tom Warner Cable donated ten thousand dollars' worth of airtime. We prom, uh, produced a cable spot, and they ran that for six months. So, you know, there's some grassroots things that could be done to promote the image of Gaston County. Half a million dollars could maybe be used some other way. I don't know, that's just my opinion, it's marketing, but I just wanted to share those thoughts with you, and ask that you closely monitor the taxpayer funds going towards any kind of image campaign. So, thank you.
Any questions? Ken? Okay. Thank you very much. We'll go in, Mr. Bun, to the consent agenda. Is there a motion? There's ten items there. Everyone looked it over, and anyone got a question, or anyone pull? Ready to make a motion?
Sure.
Is there a second?
Second. Okay. Do we need to note the change?
Yes, I was just gonna ask that, under discussion.
The memo we had on the traffic ordinance, there was the wrong, street name is in the agenda.
Just down here.
That's correct.
So if we could...
Exhibit three dash one.
Exhibit three one.
Correct. If you could note...
We have an amended memorandum.
We could make that motion.
Okay.
Include the correction.
Yes.
I think we need to do that.
Okay.
If not, don't worry about it.
I will make a motion to amend. Item number three, exhibit three dash one, as the attached and amended memorandum, and I, unless anyone wants, I will not read it in its entirety.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? All in favor? Okay? And that's the consent agenda. Okay, a regular agenda. Item eleven is the Greater Gaston Development Corporation request for funding for county-wide marketing. This is item number eleven on your exhibit presentation, is Mr. Mark Kramer and Mr. Bob Clay with Greater Gaston Development Corporation. Gentlemen?
Mayor, council, thank you very much for allowing us the time to come before you to talk about the Greater Gaston Development Corporation, and more specifically, the Alliance for Growth Image Campaign that we, that we initiated. Okay, so Mark is not only an attorney and a really bright guy, but he's also my IT guy, so he can help me move along through this thing. In August of last year, the Greater Gaston Development Corporation was formed as a nonprofit. It is a totally business-led effort organized to accelerate growth. We had two tenants that initiated the seven committees that you are all familiar with that came out of the, came out of the study. Those tenants were simply this, to grow tax base and create jobs. That's what we're trying to do. We felt like the best chance to unite business and government, other nonprofits, behind this pro-growth agenda and encourage cooperation among various interests. We had a number of, number of folks involved in it. I was fortunate enough to be the initial chair of this group. Fred Jackson was the chair when, in fact, it was the Economic Development Division of the Chamber before we withdrew from the Chamber and started our own. Of course, Doug Luckett, Andy Warlick, Chris Welchel, and then Mark Kramer is our executive director. Two graphics that really kind of drove where we wanted to go. The first one was population growth, and if you were able to see this, these tiny little numbers, it basically said that Gastonia, Gaston County effectively grew at two point seven percent, while all the other counties that touched Mecklenburg, which we feel is the, kind of, the driving engine. And I would also tell you that not only Mecklenburg, but more specifically, our airport, which is known as the Charlotte Douglas International Airport, is, is really the big driver for everything that we do. But you can see that a lot of growth happened. In Charlotte, it's ten percent, Matthews, ten point three, Harrisburg, twenty-two percent. And so we're trying to figure out what can we, what can we do and how can we deal with some of these, some of these issues. The second one has to do with the capital tax rate. Again, the numbers are small, but again, those counties that touch Gaston is at point eight seven per hundred. For all the other counties that touch Mecklenburg are all below that. Now, it's, it's, it's basic math. It deals with the value of the homes, the density of the population, and unfortunately, Gaston is lagged behind in both new homes and the price of new homes as it relates to that. So again, we're back to, if we have jobs and we have housing, that'll all, that'll all move, move us forward. As said, jobs and tax base isn't really what we're after. We did develop a vision that came forth this, and Gaston County is to be the preferred Charlotte area location for new expanding business, serves ideal regional site for capital investment, employment opportunities, and job growth. That's where we want to get to. We didn't get there in a day and, or get here in a day, and we're not gonna get there in a day, but we think we have a logical and progressive way to deal with these things. So what happened? We ended up with a hundred and seven volunteers that served on seven committees, donated seven thousand hours of their time. These seven focus groups drove to try and figure out how to drive growth and jobs. Of those groups, we came up with thirty-two recommendations, and, and there were a lot more than that, but these were the thirty-two that ranked highest amongst all those committees created. So we had sites, buildings, infrastructure, transportation access, growth, regulatory process, workforce preparedness, new and expanded recruiting, entrepreneur, small business, image, marketing, relationships. So, why the image campaign? The, the image committee paid for by the GGDC hired a company called Voci who did a basic poll research that involved not only Mecklenburg residents and businesses, but also Gaston. It wasn't that the people in Mecklenburg felt we necessarily had a bad image, they didn't feel we had any image, is pretty much what was reported. Gaston County happened to have I-85 running through it, and that was a road people got on to go to the mountains or to go to Atlanta. And that's pretty sobering that that was the impact they felt they had. The other thing that was pretty shocking to all of us was that fifty-eight percent of the folks that lived in Gaston County who were polled, and they felt this was a good polling, had positive perception of Gaston County. Well, the bad news is, that means forty-two percent didn't think that. Folks that live here didn't have a positive perception of where they lived. Obviously, we constantly deal with negative newspaper headlines, and they're hard to overcome, perceptions that we all deal with, even most recently, our reality. We've got to tell a pro-Gaston story based on facts. We really believe we do have a good story. We think we have lots of assets, so we're trying to figure out how to get that happening. Feel like we have an opportunity to influence the hospitality industry, the development community, workforce moving into the region, entrepreneurs, and we hope we can influence the news media. These numbers that we, were developed by the image campaign, the image committee, excuse me, were arrived at four hundred thousand in year one, two hundred and fifty in year two, two hundred and fifty in year three. We, and these numbers were derived by the folks that worked on the image committee. Certainly, one of those, one of those persons, and you saw her name, that was a co-chair of the image committee, was Elaine Lyerly, it was Lyerly Agency. And she looked at a number of different budgets, presented those to the image committee. Andy Warlick was the co-chair. He also went to a number of industry folks who were running a lot of the textile campaigns, marketing campaigns, to try and create a positive image for the textile industry, because obviously, that doesn't necessarily have the best outside image going either. So we felt like there were compatible things. These were budget numbers that, that were brought forward on, on the compatible basis. I want to make sure you understand one thing. The GGDC is funded by private business. The GGDC will not take one penny of this money for any administrative or oversight costs. And I want to be really clear about that. All of this money is gonna go to the campaign, and we're gonna talk a little bit more on how that gets developed in just a second. So at this point, we met with County Travel and Tourism. They, their board unanimously recommended to county commissioners that they fund a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in year one, ninety-three, seven fifty in years two and three. The private sector, meaning the investors in the GGDC, have also committed to a hundred thousand dollars this year, sixty-two thousand, five hundred in years two and three. We are asking tonight of you to consider one hundred thousand dollars and sixty-two thousand in years two and three. We've asked Belmont and Mount Holly to consider twenty-five thousand in year one, fifteen, six twenty-five in years two and three. At this point, Mount Holly voted unanimously about a month ago to fund the twenty-five thousand. It's coming before Belmont, they've had it in their budget workshops, and I believe what's gonna happen there is, they're actually gonna have half of that money come out of their general fund, and half the money will come from Belmont's travel and tourism from the one hotel that they have, which is the Belmont Hampton. We've asked all of the municipalities, the smaller municipalities, to consider five thousand dollars in, in each year. At this point, Bessemer City is, is the single one. We've made presentations at Stanley, Palace, Kramer, and McCattville's next week, so we're making the rounds on that.
Nobody said no yet. Decided one way or the other.
Right. And how does, how does this committee work? Well, for those that would have a hundred thousand dollars or more invested, it would be two seats on this committee. One seat for twenty-five to nine ninety-nine, and one seat collectively for all of those other municipalities that would be under twenty-five thousand. So, want to make sure that what, what we're asking of you is not only the funding, but we really would like for this council to talk amongst yourselves to have two city council members be on this image committee. We want this to be at a very high level. We want involvement and engagement. We want you to be able to come back to your own council and report what that committee is doing and the things that we're working on. So what would be the steering committee's responsibilities? Number one, to set objectives, repair and issue requests for quotations, select a marketing PR firm. We would think that we, we are gonna have to advertise it, obviously, it's gotta go out. We've talked to some of the, some of the legal folks that have said whenever there's public monies there, we've got a, there's a format we've got to go out and deal with, and we, we intend to do that. And then it would also be to oversee the implementation of this, of this fund. The Greater Gaston Development Corporation, what our administrative group would be, would be to implement, finalize the fundraising campaign, administrative support for the steering committee, organization, do all that kind of stuff. Be the fiscal agent, i.e. to, when the committee says that the PR firm, marketing firm has done what they're supposed to do at this point, they're authorized then to cut a check, we would be the ones that would write that check from this separate fund. Would also then be responsible to report to the committee on contract administration. In other words, we're gonna set up metrics and benchmarks of accountability, and the committee will set those. We don't know what those are at this point. The committee will determine that. So hopefully, we're gonna have two folks from the county, two folks from the city, two folks, two folks from the GGDC, the Alliance for Growth, and then one from the city of Belmont, one from Mount Holly, and then one from the remaining smaller municipalities who would be brought together. So, this one, this one's tough to see, but, you know, what's kind of exciting to us is when you look at large US cities ranked by population change going through twenty thirty, you can see that Charlotte is in fact a leader, I mean, above Austin, Las Vegas, Knoxville, Columbia, Charleston, all these other places of, of population growth. We're there. We've got to take advantage of what's coming at us and what's coming to our region. So what do we want to try to accomplish? We want our image to go from bad to better. Will it be perfect? No, but we certainly need to change things. We want to go from afterthought to being an upfront contender. When we interviewed with this Voci group, one of the things that came out when we talked to the Charlotte developers, they said, "We're basically of the opinion that you don't have land that's there to be developed." Goodness gracious, folks, I mean, we have tons of land in this county, and obviously, it's my business, John's past business, and, and there's, there's a lot, lots of positive things from that perspective. Got to get from rundown to emerging, we've got to go from eroding tax base to growth. I want to say one more thing about the, the funds that we're asking for of all the municipalities, and that is, it's been our general consensus and belief from this image committee and from the campaign and gentleman, that we think that all together, we have the ability to leverage all the funds. Let's take the hundred thousand that we're asking of Gastonia, eighty thousand people out of two hundred thousand. Let's take the 100,000 that we're asking of Gastonia, 80,000 people out of 200,000. So we're asking you for 25% of the money this year for 40% exposure to, to this great municipality that I live in. So we think that everybody can leverage up as a result of that. Hopefully, with the combination of all folks having seats at the table, that it's going to be the kind of campaign, driven campaign that we want. So also fail to say that the incoming chair, Joe Long, is here tonight with us also. He will, he will be next year's GGDC and be coming back to report to you. Anything we can answer for you all.
Questions? Yes, sir. Mr. Kimble?
Thank you, Your Honor. Bob, a question that I had is, and you partially answered it, a timeline to go along with your milestones. Is that something, and, and I know we're, we're in our infancy here, but do, do you have like a, a projection of when certain benchmarks might be hit and then we would be getting, getting the reports on that?
Yeah. It's a good question. I, I can't give you a dead timeline right now because it's really going to be the committee to negotiate those timelines with whoever it is that they choose. So what's going to happen is, is the RFQ gets developed, we're, we're going to come up with kind of a draft. The committee will say, "I like this," or "I don't like that about it." So that gets vetted. It goes out. We, we think that that, I'm not sure what the legal process is, but we think the actual response process could be within 30 or 45 days max. And then the committee would interview what we would hope to be the top two or three groups to come in and have them sit down, talk about what their thoughts, what their plans are, and, and then negotiate those exact timelines you're, you're speaking about, Mr. Kimble.
Thank you. A, a second question, Mr. Clay. Do you have a, in kind of a roundabout, a question? Do you have another successful campaign that maybe you're, you're looking at or there's several cities where you could say, "Hey, they really hit a home run with this," or "This may have some applicability to Gaston County." What, what are your thoughts, sir?
Great, great. That's a, a really good question. And the reason it's a good question is because that will be part of the criteria for the RFQ. What have you, what have you done? What have you done with municipalities or with areas, regions? We're, we're really dealing with the Gaston County region.
Correct.
We really are. We're trying to attract growth here. So yeah, that's, that'll absolutely be one of the requirements.
Thank you. That's all I have, Your Honor. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Dr. Kimble?
Bob, with this process, my, my question is, is when you, you know, I understand the need for fundraising for this, but when you're putting your numbers before your RFQ, are you not almost showing your cards and having someone build the campaign to that? And I don't know if that's good or bad as compared to putting the RFQ out there first and putting to that the request for, you know, numbers? And then looking at that and seeing, you know, what are we going to get for the money that's being proposed? So I guess what I'm saying is, is, you know, if, if I was going to put out that RFQ for my business, what I would do is I would say, "Okay, well, if I want to, you know, have a branding campaign or something like that," then I would go to firms and I would say, "Okay, what are you going to do for me and what is it going to cost?" And then I could look at that and see what I could afford in my budget. And I would look at a comparison between different, you know, groups that are making those proposals. And then based upon their, you know, their proposal, what they're seeing would be the direction in which to go. And then the, you know, the budgetary impact of that, I, I would make a decision. But by putting these numbers on the front end, I'm wondering if we get a little bit, you know, handcuffed or strapped by, again, having that out there first. Was there a conversation amongst the committee about that?
Yeah, absolutely was. So there's two pieces to what you, what you're talking about. And I, I don't disagree with where you are, but one of the main things is, is that the committee really studied what campaigns of this size and the penetration that we're looking for cost. And that's why we're looking at the, this three-year program, not a one-year kind of, let's get after it. So the monies that, that were requested or being talked about here are, are monies that the committee, the current image committee that is, is going to keep on staying behind this thing, but in a different form. They felt this was the kind of dollars that we needed to look for to get the kind of penetration that we need. Now, to your question, if we, if we know that's there, one of the other issues that comes back is if you go out for, for, and say, "Tell me what you can do and what it would be," if they don't have any idea what kind of funds might be available to them, it could greatly impact what that, what that source of, of RFQ could be. So you could get three different groups. One could come in without this dialogue that, that we're going to, that this committee's going to present to them and say, "Here are the things that we want you to do." And so, and here, and it's funded. So there's not that, gee, what do we do kind of thing? And then what I think's going to happen, and I hope is going to happen, is that we know there's a number there, they know a number is there, but instead of trying to maybe bump up against that number, hopefully, they're going to be competitive under that number. So that's, that's what, that's what we're trying to do, Dave. And it's, it's a good question, but there's two ways to do it. You're kind of guessing on one hand, the other way is playing. Everybody's on a level playing field. These are the basic criteria you've got to deal with. These are the timelines we're going to expect of you and go from there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Governor. Bob, we're not going to be advertising Crowder's Mountain and Daniel Stowe and Whitewater Rafting. This is more going for jobs and tax base. What would that look like?
Yeah, well, again, I'm not sure what the, what the, what the actual program looks like, but one of the things we know, for instance, travel and tourism for our county that's, impacts your, a lot, number of your hotels right here. Most of that advertisement that's going on is going way out, trying to bring groups in. We feel like that there's a tremendous base of opportunity very close in that's, that we're not getting any bang for our buck or any hit. Ms. Thomas's comments earlier about advertising and billboards and those kinds of things, I, I think that's all got to be part of this campaign that's multimedia. I, I don't, I'm not an advertising person. She knows more about it with a little finger than I do, but, but I'm hoping that those are the broad-based kinds of things that are going to happen here in, in our region.
I just want to follow up on one thing. You see, I work in Charlotte and I get kidded a lot about living in Gastonia. You know, my coworkers will say, "G-Town. Does that stand gang town? Does that stand for gun town?" I'm like, "Oh, brother." I just tell them it's the best kept secret out there. I love the town. I've been here 21 years. I'm glad I brought my family down here. It's just, it's a great place to raise a family. And I think once we get that out there, it's going to be the diamond in the rough. The other, the other question I have is Gastonia has given the bulk, out of all the, all the cities, we're given the bulk of the money if we go through with this. How do we assure that Gastonia is going to be prominent in the advertising?
Sure. Well, again, I'm going to step, one step back and tell you that I moved here in 1993. I lived in Charlotte for a while, I went to Greensboro, but I came here in 1993. And the first thing that I discovered going to a lot of town council meetings when I was representing Farley Arms was there was a tremendous amount of parochialism. I mean, everybody had their own little deal. Everybody was, you know, Belmont, Mount Holly and Cherryville and, you know, everybody had their own little deal. And I've, over these 20-plus years, I've seen that break down a lot. I mean, in a positive way, not in a bad way. I've seen those walls and people start working together. To answer your question about the dollars, again, it's kind of back to, city of Gastonia has the most exits on the expressway. They've got the biggest town that there is.
Right.
They've got the most people that there is. And again, I'm, I really feel like if this image committee's campaign is done properly, certainly the largest municipality with the most land is going to flourish the most. Can I promise you that there's going to, what I will promise you is it's not going to be about any one town. It's not going to be about any one thing. It's going to be about all the assets that we have. Is downtown Gastonian asset? I hope so. And we've, we've got a lot of things to do down there, but, but I hope it is. So I can't, all I can do is tell you that if y'all have two seats on the table, obviously, you, you have, you have a lot of say in, in what's going on and the conversations that's had. And that's why I think it's really important that we end up with the level of folks that are sitting up here tonight that would be on that committee.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Clay, another question. Yeah, Councilman Gallagher had brought up about, you know, Crowder's Mountain and the Whitewater Rafting and other things. But to be clear, and I, I want to be clear on this, that it's not just about travel and tourism.
Absolutely. Travel and tourism plays a small role.
Okay. Because, you know, it's, right. It's, it's more than just somebody jumping off the, the expressway and spending overnight, which is not a bad thing, in one of our hotels or going to something for two days at the conference center. If I understand your vision and that of, of the present, the present group that you represent, it's a long-term vision for stability for the region. And to bring in, to, to bring in financial resources which are going to positively impact, for example, our tax base, which travel and tourism, I'm not sure how much that does on a long-term basis. So your response?
Yeah. Our, our mission, as I said, our two tenants, base tenants, jobs, tax base. We've got to change the perception and let people know about the assets of Gaston County. Those people that have got to be part of that are the large development companies that are sitting in Charlotte dying for opportunities and we're not, we're not promoting that to them. They don't know what we can do over here. And it's a shame that they don't, but they don't.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Great.
Thank y'all for coming to the council meeting and, and working at, helping us understand this bigger picture. Okay. I think there's a lot of different interpretations within the community about GGDC as the Alliance for Growth and GGDC at the chamber. Okay? Help me understand.
Sure.
Exactly where that, is there a common thread? How are those two? Because the city of Gastonia helps fund GGDC of the chamber. If that's my understanding. No?
Well, what, okay, here's, here's, here's what took place. As you know, there's a number of Chamber of Commerce is in Gaston County. And particularly, there was conflict between Montcross and the Gaston Regional Chamber for whatever reason. One of the things that we felt early on was that as long as what was the Economic Development Commission, Committee, excuse me, economic, inside the Gaston Regional Chamber, that meant that whenever any, whenever that group of private money, and, and the good news was, is that invested dollars always stayed as a separate line item. They were, they weren't commingled with the chamber's funds.
You're right.
It was all, it was always held as.
Right.
As a line item. And so one of the problems with that is, is that the investors were seeing that everything that we would have to do would have to be approved by the Gaston Regional Chamber Board. And therefore, we didn't feel we'd get support from eastern Gaston County if that was, if they felt that the GGDC was underneath the Regional Chamber Board. Brenda, that was the basic premise of us separating from the chamber. And the chamber gladly had participated with us in letting that happen. What, what we're trying to do right now is to work with both of those chambers a lot. I mean, we meet with Ted Hall constantly. We meet with Jeff Sanford constantly and we're talking about these same things. Anne Hoshite, the current chairman of the, or president of the chamber, excuse me, she is all about what we're doing. They are very supportive of everything that the GGDC is doing. So I think it's been a very smooth and good transfer. But that's what's going. And I also tell you that the, the, the private funds from GGDC investors also go to the chamber to undergird effectively the salaries of, of the executives of the chamber. And, and we dedicate monies to that each year. We've also dedicated monies to the Economic Development Commission of the county to support luncheons, other kinds of entertainment functions that supposedly the county, the county dollars can't do. So this entertainment and some of that kind of travel for business companies coming in, that, that's funded by the GGDC.
Okay. And, and don't get me wrong, okay? But bringing up the EDC, does GGDC work in conjunction with EDC?
With, with the county EDC?
Yes, sir.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. In fact, to make, be real clear about that, we have three seats on the board. The current, the past and the future chair. So I sit on that board. And I will also tell you that one of the recommendations that came out of another committee was in fact that we start to work with the commissioners to make the board an authority as opposed to a commission that recommends to the board. In other words, we think that as long as, as long as the, as that board doesn't really have a authoritative function, all the business people and the public officials that sit at that table, if all you're doing is going to these meetings and listening to kind of a report as to what happened as opposed to what's going to happen, and as long as the business community and the public officials aren't involved in directing where the EDC is going, we think, we think that we're missing a step there.
And I'm not going to disagree with you, okay?
Good.
But my biggest heartburn with this whole conversation that we're having is that GGDC is going to work in conjunction with EDC, the county EDC. And GGDC is requesting $100,000 from the city of Gastonia for this initial funding. And the city of Gastonia does not have a voting member on the EDC. And I know that's not your responsibility, okay? But that bothers me, okay?
I'm going to tell you that, Brenda, frankly, the voting members don't have any votes. They, they don't.
Well, then, then we got more problems right now than we.
You've, you've been in those meetings. I've seen many of them.
I have.
You know what goes on in the meetings.
I do.
And quite frankly, the, the, the board members do not have any authority to take any action other than one. And that is the Architectural Review Committee for the.
Tech Park.
Tech Park.
Yeah.
That's it.
I, I've been involved in some of that too. But I mean.
We're on the same page on this, on this particular issue. We're not on different pages.
You're right. Well, that's why I say, I don't want you to take it wrong, but I do think that, that it puts the city of Gastonia in a situation until maybe something is more com- compounded together or meshed together. And how, how does that look? What's the vision of that? What's that going to look like?
Are you talking about now the EDC or are you talking about?
I'm talking about GGDC.
Are you talking about the image campaign specifically?
Yep.
Well.
As far as.
The EDC has nothing to do with this image campaign. Nothing. When you ask if we're working with them, yeah, we're working with them to try to help, for instance.
The growth of the, in the tax base. I, I get that.
For instance, we, we've, we've volunteered up to them that we, when they have a prospect coming to town, one of these.
Right.
Unnamed rainbow, you know, voodoo, whatever they are, they call them, that we want to have a number of our senior business leaders in this community to meet with them, to talk with them about the assets of Gaston County. That's something that's never been asked. It's never been done. We, we're being very direct about the feeling that that needs to take place. And this is with manufacturers or folks that are internationally involved. We're bringing in international clients. Why wouldn't you want to talk to somebody who's also doing business in China or in Germany?
Right.
So we're, we're on the same page on that. But I want to be real careful what you, because I don't want you to misinterpret them. The EDC has nothing to do with this image campaign. Nothing.
Right.
They have no vote. They have no say. They have nothing to do with. They have no vote, they have no say, they have nothing to do with this image campaign. We're asking for two people from the city, two folks from the county, two folks from the business community, one from Belmont, one from Mount Holly, one from the other municipalities. That's who makes up the committee, who determines what this thing is going to look like and how it's going to be woven together.
And I appreciate that explanation, okay? I really do.
Good.
The total investment over a three-year period is $900,000 if I calculate that right. Is that right?
For three years, that's right.
Close to a million dollars.
That's right.
On a camp, on the image campaign.
That's right.
All right. That's all for right now, thank you. And I appreciate your answers.
Yeah, sure, you're welcome.
Mr. Clay?
Yes, sir.
I see that Mount Holly is giving 25,000, they'll have one seat.
That's right.
You're asking Gastonia for 100,000, we have two seats.
That's right.
That's not fair. We ought to have four seats. You're going to say that, I think, once, two seats is enough. I don't think that we're going...
I guess what I'd say to you is...
We just give 50,000 and get two seats.
You're going to have, you're going to have, between the business community, you and the county, it's pretty much going to control what this thing does. We certainly want the input from the smaller towns. I'd say they should be a lot more concerned about having only one seat, as opposed to you needing four.
I heard a mayor image of that argument last night at a small town. How can they have two seats if we only have one among all of us? How can that possibly be fair? So...
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor. One more question, Mr. Clay. When we're talking about, for example, what your request is for one year, and we're talking about it would be a calendar year from, say, June 1 of, to '16, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Bob, when would the kickoff begin?
As soon as we know we have the funding. I mean, is, when we know we have the funding, all of this just immediately gets into fast forward.
And Councilman McAtter, I just want to let you know that I crunch numbers a lot, and I crunch these numbers, and what I'm finding out is that it's less per person, Gastonia is paying less per person than Mount Holly or Belmont. The way it comes out, if you break it down, Gastonia would be paying $1.36 per person. And that's based on 73,000, not the 80 that he was saying. Belmont would be paying $2.40 per person for their share. And Mount Holly would be paying $1.79 per person for their share. So in essence, we, we are paying less per person, which is a good thing. Thank you, John.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead, and you're next.
Yeah.
Mr. Clay, from what I understand, is it nine members of this committee, correct? Two from the county, two, okay.
Sounds just right.
And does this committee have the absolute final authority on this campaign? Like, the committee comes up and says, we've selected this firm, can the GGDC come back and say, yeah, well, we're going in a different direction?
Absolutely not. You, absolutely, the committee is the authority, is the final word, absolutely.
Okay. And then, we talked a little bit about the target, and I know we've heard several people say, I don't want it to be the Whitewater Center, I don't want it to be Crane Mountain. And I understand we're doing this for business, but I, you know, one of the things that, and we're kind of getting into little details here, but one of the things that businesses look for is quality of life. So I think those would maybe not be the focus of the campaign, but be part of the campaign. Now, having said that, if you are focusing on Stowe Botanical Garden, Crowder's Mountain, you know, that kind of thing, you're going for one target audience. You might be in, you know, the kind of travel magazines or on the billboards, as we mentioned earlier, maybe run, you know, a certain section of the Gazette or the Observer or something like that. But that's not really the audience we're going for. We're going for the, you know, maybe the CEO of a company that's thinking of expanding or an operation that's looking to move. Where do you target companies like that? Is it, you know, in a Forbes magazine, or, you know, is, how are we going to know where that target's going? Or is that something that the committee will entirely decide?
Yes, it does. And again, you're talking to a commercial real estate guy, and I'd love to tell you that I can answer you intelligently about what the committee will come up with, or what the recommendations of the marketing and PR firm would be, but I can't. But I think the committee's engagement in it is going to, is going to have all of those details knocked out. And again, I want to be real clear that the business folks, one of the big priorities that has been talked about over and over again are measurable results. And that's going to be a major driver in this. We have one baseline already with this vote sheet report, because we can go back and have those same folks recast on periods of time, presuming we get the majority of them willing to respond again, to see if this campaign is having any impact with that particular audience. But I think there'll be a number of other measurable elements that can be derived and completed by this, by this group, in concert with the marketing and PR firm. They're the ones that are going to know how to do this.
Okay. And then, the last thing I have is, in your presentation, you had the numerical values, and then outside of that, you had how many voting members they'd have in response. And I know you're asking us for a certain amount for the two votes.
Right.
And I kind of have two points to that. One is, is it possible for Gastonia to contribute less than what's been asked?
We would hope you wouldn't consider that, but, you know, that's...
Well, and I understand you want the most that you can get, and I certainly understand that. But then, my second point to that, I kind of addressed into the council, in that this is going to be a campaign that focuses on the county and the region as a whole. The county's already contributed, Belmont's already contributed, Mount Holly's looking to contribute, Bestmar City's already contributed. We are the largest municipality in the Gaston County region. So certainly, we're going to benefit whether we participate or not. But don't we benefit more if we're one of the driving factors? I mean, I can't see the county and Belmont and Mount Holly voting on an image campaign that would prominently display Gastonia if we haven't contributed.
Really?
We are going to get left out of that. So, it's, it's kind of, and I don't mean this in a negative way, but we're almost kind of being forced to participate, because if everybody but, does but us, we get left out.
That really was never the intent of this...
No, and that's why I say, I didn't mean that negatively, because it's, I don't feel like you're up here saying, you better participate, you're going to get left out. But it, but it is what it is. We're promoting the region, and if everybody in the region participates, except for us, it stands to reason we're going to have a very minuscule role in that campaign. So, that's what happened.
Let me be the villain just a moment. I can't be quiet that long. Mr. City Manager, what, how much does, I have a reason for asking this, how much in our budget do we pay yearly to the Economic Development Corporation, the county?
To the county, we do not. To the county Economic Development Commission, to the GGDC is $12,500. And we're also Chamber members, but actually, to the Economic Development Commission, we don't pay any dollars directly. The city doesn't. Now, all of us who are city, I mean, again, people that are living in the city are county taxpayers.
Right.
So we all contribute just as much, if you're in a city or you're an unincorporated area, the same.
The city has been an investor in what was the Economic Development Division of the Chamber, and has continued to be an investor, a private investor, in the, an investor in the GGDC when we split up.
Do you two gentlemen, you can just say yes or no, do you feel competition or friction between Donnie Hicks's office and your office? Is there sentiment of, okay, you can't do it, we'll do it type? Or, I mean, is there any friction that you know of there? Or has it come out yet?
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll just tell you, I have what I think is a really good professional relationship with Donnie, and I think that Donnie has done exactly what the county commissioners in the past and present have told him to do. And that was to try and go out and recruit these specific, large, international businesses to come to the Tech Park. And if you look at the Tech Park over the years, I don't know that anybody sees all the exact numbers, time, money that was invested in that infrastructure and double power and all the same. But look at it now, and it's basically filled up. I mean, they got the last thing to expect, and thank goodness for finally getting a spec industrial building in Gaston County. We hadn't had that since I've been here. So, so my point to you is this, what I think that we are trying to encourage EDC to do is to look beyond that particular vertical silo of economic development. We think there's a tremendous amount of opportunity in our retail quarters. We think there's an opportunity in our office corridors. So we see ourselves helping to guide that particular piece that hasn't been there before in the EDC. And I will tell you that the county commissioners have been very open to talk to us about expanding what the EDC does. So, is there friction? I think that any time that you're, you're dealing with a fellow who has really had a very dominant role in county development for as many years as he's had it, that any time he sees another group that's standing out there, I mean, certainly, he's going to, he's going to want to, I think he's been very cooperative with us, but I also think he's going to look at it like anybody that has a job, what's going on? Am I losing some of my authority? Am I, you know, and that's not the intent at all. We have never attacked Donnie. We don't intend to attack Donnie. We intend to hopefully diversify what the EDC is doing.
Mr. Campbell, Mr. Dr. Curran.
Thank you. At this juncture, I'm prepared to make a, thank you, at this juncture, I'm prepared to make a motion. What, I, I have some concerns, Bob, and that being laying all the money out upfront. But I also understand that you need a commitment to go forward. And I would make the motion that we move forward with $50,000 immediately, and revisit the second $50,000 per your request after the RFQs are successful and you start to move forward with, with whatever company you choose, in demonstrable milestones and progress and things that, that one, and I also understand that would be one seat contingent on the second $50,000. But I think that that's, I think, I feel it's a fair way to do it. I understand that, you know, you need to have some funds to get this off the ground, but I also feel that gives us some, a little bit of a microscopic look at what the progress will be and where we're going with this, once you start to get these things underway, which I understand that you would do almost immediately. So that's my motion.
Your second to the motion. Motion does, like, second.
Mr. Munn, would you like to comment on this? I'm sorry, Dr. Curran and then Mr. Munn, but then, after, after David, would you comment on the money situations, tax, occupancy taxes, et cetera?
Yeah. The, in terms of, you know, where the money could come from, the money could come from occupancy tax funds. We have a fund balance in occupancy tax, and as you saw, I provided you a memo showing that we actually have funds available now. But those funds have been designated essentially to pay back the bonds. Now, in a number of years, the amount of revenue that will be required for the conference center will increase significantly because the debt jumps. In 2019, 2020, it moves up. So unless we build a lot more hotels, which we want to do, and, and if we can keep the deficit down at the conference center over a period of time, eventually, though, we will need all those dollars to pay for the retirement of the debt at the conference center. But right now, you do have the money in, in that. Now, the actual determination of using those funds and in the, in the fund balance of that are the, is the Tourism Development Board. So if we would want to go in that direction, the council would recommend tonight or at a subsequent meeting, that that board then appropriate from fund balance the money. The other option you have is the general fund, which is property tax and sales tax, and that's the general taxpayers' dollars. And we have our fund balance there. So those are the, the two places that, that are prominent.
Mr. Dr. Curran?
I was wondering if I could possibly hear from, and I know there's a couple people in the audience, Candy Thomas spoke earlier, and I see Mike Sumner out there, too. And I was wondering if maybe one or both of them could, you know, come to the podium and entertain a question or two, if that's permissible.
Mike's a pretty big guy, you want to get him up there?
Well, you know, my, my concern is, is basically, you know, I do believe in marketing, but I also believe that, you know, marketing doesn't start and stop. Marketing starts and never stops. So I don't believe in any campaign that has, you know, beginning and an end, because when it ends, is when any effect that you might have had is going to drop off. So, so when I'm looking at this, I'm looking at it for its long-term, you know, success, and therefore, its long-term funding. And I think that's a concern. The other is, is I haven't been totally convinced by two non-advertising, non-marketing individuals, okay, or their committee, who only consists of one person who is in that, you know, industry or business, that these dollars are going to be successful in changing the image of Gaston County. And that's where I really, that's my biggest problem. It's not so much, you know, making the commitment for the money, it's telling me that I wouldn't do better taking that $100,000 and putting that towards, you know, working towards getting gigabit fiber in Gaston County, okay? And the value of that, how that brings entrepreneurs and that brings businesses to our community, because that's an infrastructure that we don't currently have that would be very valuable to our city and to our county. Or any number of other means by which we could spend dollars. I mean, do we have a gag order on the Gazette that they can't put the types of articles in the front page that they do? I mean, that's negative imaging. So we could throw money at this campaign, and during the whole time, that money can be going down the drain in the sense that the Gazette is still doing what they do. So, so I haven't really, you know, and I'm not trying to be hard about this, but I'm just really not, you know, feeling like, I don't want to waste anybody's money. And I haven't felt convinced yet that this is going to be a good value. So I don't know if Mr. Sumner, you know, or Candy Thomas, Mooney, or whoever wants to, you know, you know, speak to that, speak to the longevity of a marketing process. And, and do you really feel like, you know, in three years, that these folks shouldn't be coming back to us for more money?
You know, when I hear that someone won't spend $100,000, I mean, a million dollars in advertising, it gets my attention, I'll tell you that, from a marketing point of view. You're absolutely right on, in terms of how you sort of designed the house. Just last week, I went out to talk to one of the largest private schools in the state, and they asked me to put together a marketing campaign, which I did. It wasn't half million, it wasn't a million dollars, but it was close to $400,000. Well, they wanted to spend $100,000. They didn't tell me what they wanted to spend, they told me what their objectives were. And then you sort of lay it all out, then you start to sign, well, what can we do with that? So I do want to say that your point was very well made with me, because you hear that a lot. At the same time, I have a little, little bit of an interesting perspective, not a lot of people, my background, I, years and years ago, I know Porter remembers this, I worked with it, old Economic Development Commission, which was funded by the cities and counties, and it was run through the Chamber, and some of the same issues that are happening now with these chambers are happening then. I've seen the old GIDC with Ralph Isley, I was, it happened in, prior to that, when Steve Stell came back and put the GIDC together again, that was back, I think, in the late 90s. Can, I was involved with what Candy put together. I think the bottom line is this, last year, there was 3.8 billion dollars spent by communities to attract industry and economic development. Think about that amount of money for a minute, over, close to $4 billion. You know, you think about, how do you get to these people? Are you the only people, if someone asks you a question, how do you get to them? I don't know. I really don't. I think what we've got to work on in this town, from someone who's lived here for a long time, is telling, doing a better job of telling our story. Because right now, we don't tell our story, we leave it to other people to do it. And those people are the DJs in Charlotte, there's the people that, they're all around everywhere. And when you don't tell a good positive story, it's left up to other people. And let's face it, I think it was 60 Minutes in 1975 had a, about a paragraph on Gaston County murder rate. And from that one, one, one story, we became the murder capital of the world.
It's 72.
72, okay. That's, like you said, he's been around a long time. 72. Okay. That's, like you said, he's been around a long when I am.
Along with, along with the tattoo capital of the world, too.
Yeah, tattoo. And now, but anyway, I, I think the point is this, is, is, I think the story needs to be said. I really do. I, 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 I think that, at the same time, I've seen this picture before. That's the only thing I'm saying. And I think what, uh, Councilman Craig brought out is very important. You, you just can't go out there and say, okay, EDC's not doing this, so we're going to do it. And without bringing people together, because Donnie does a phenomenal job. He's respected all over the country and some things he's focused on. And I think this program is going to be very important that, that they have some autonomy from governing bodies. They're going to have to do some things that you may not agree with. But you give them money, and I think we've got to make some effort to try to improve the image, not just the people outside the county, but the people here within, too. That's very important. And, and, and to tell our story. And I think our story is not trying to say we're something that we're not. We're not Belmont. Belmont, I mean, believe, believe me, is, is a wonderful community, has done so many good things. But Gaston County i- is, is, is different. And, and that's what makes us, in my opinion, what makes our area so strong. And I think the only way you can get that out is through an effort between the, the business community, the, the governments, uh, the, the rest of the private sector to get together. And I think it's going to be critical for us, for our future, to do that. Whether it's nine hundred thousand dollars or not, I don't know, but I sure like the sound of it. I'll make that point. Yeah, thank you, sir.
Question? Yes, sir. Moment, Mike.
Oh, thank you. Uh, but now, just, uh, a, a more of a comment is, um, you know, I, I heard directly what you said, sir, but I think also that, um, to the point, we don't need to be Belmont. We need to be Gastonia and Gaston County, and that's the story that we need to tell. If you go, if you go north on I-85, the Concord area is where racing lives. All right?
Right.
Raleigh is not that. All right? So, we, we need to define ourselves, I think, a- as a community and as a county. That's the way I see it.
I agree. And I don't think there's too many exclusions. I just feel like that one of the good things about this county-wide effort, you'll have people from, you know, someone mentioned earlier, we won't be talking about, uh, attractions we have here. But I don't think that's the beauty of Gaston County. I think Gaston County is its people. And I think this should be about our people. And, uh, and whether you live in Belmont or in Bessworth City, uh, it, it's the same strong message. But, uh, I do feel this, that uh, someone asked earlier, uh, whether my firm was asked to be on this job or whether God's job or not, it needs to be, it needs to happen. Something like this needs to happen. But it does need to be consolidated. I, I, I think, I think having Donnie in the chamber and, and the Mon across the chamber, all these, you know, this should be a real an effort that everybody is on the same song sheet. Because it, we've done, we've run the songs before. And, and I think it's important that everybody understands what the goals and objectives are, and everybody signs off on them.
If I could just say, I'm, I'm really appreciative of Mike saying what he said because he said more articulately than I could ever have done what we're trying to do, and that is to weave this common thread for Gaston County and to benefit all the citizens of Gaston County. We think that the citizens of Gastonia are going to benefit in a, in a great way, just as we think all the cities in Gaston, in Gaston County will. So, thank you.
Pierce, hold.
Yeah, um.
I admit, when we, when we came in here, I had a lot of questions. And for all the council members that asked questions before me, thank you, because I had most of my questions answered. But, um, and, and I, I think you've provided the answers that I personally wanted to hear, I guess. You, you've answered a lot of the questions that I had. And, and I wanted to tell Councilman Kimball, uh, your motion was not a bad motion, but the reason that I couldn't participate in that is that I think it's important that we have the two votes from the beginning so that we shape the campaign. I don't want to pick up a second vote after the campaign's already been shaped and then we just have a second vote to give money. If we're going to do it, I think it's important that we have the two votes from the beginning so we help shape the campaign and we have our two cents. And so I, I didn't want you to think I didn't support the 50,000, but I, I feel, feel it's important we have the two votes from the beginning. So, having said that, I will make the motion, uh, to support and fund the request as presented tonight.
Where would the money come from?
Right.
Uh, thank you. To specify that it come from the hotel occupancy tax, not from the general fund.
To recommend that to the Tourism Development Board.
Correct. Not from the general fund or from the tax dollars, but from the hotel occupancy tax. Thank you for, because I meant to-
Second to the motion.
And I'll second that.
Questions?
Clarification. Is this, uh, the hundred thousand plus 62.5 plus 62.5? Is that what the numbers are? Correct. As, as requested.
Questions? Comments?
I don't feel comfortable voting for it, sir. I'm not going to, I'm not going to vote for it.
Okay. And, and please remember once again that it's, it's subject, it's a request to the Travel and Tourism Board. But that's all hinges on that. Only if this passes.
All right. Just to clarify exactly what, what the motion, or what I second, okay, uh, is that the request for the full funding over a three-year period will be a, a request to the Tourism Authority Board from the City of Gastonia. Is that right?
It will be a direction more than a request, won't it?
It can be a direction or a request. They're a separate board. They, they, they actually, you know, by statute, they, they make the decision on those dollars. The mayor and our members-
It is a request. It is a request.
The mayor and our members actually on there, but-
All right. And, and so that money is, is derived from where?
Hotel occupancy tax.
Okay. So, it is not property tax money?
Correct. And, and by statute, it can only be used for certain things, and, and such as, is what we're talking about here. Uh, we also use it to retire the debt with the conference center, but there are just specific uses the statute provides for that.
That was just for the, for the record, to make sure that, that we were all on the same page as where that money was coming from.
That's correct.
Is that your-
That is correct.
-motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Still under discussion.
Yeah. Mr. Munn stated that down the road, we're going to have a substantially larger debt. It's going to be demanded from this ho- hotel tax. And if we just kick in the can down the road and, and, and later on, we're going to have to, we'll have enough hotel tax maybe to meet that obligation, we'll probably have to, we've got to pay it. So, we'd have to use property tax money. Is that possible? We're kicking the can down the road, and for those, or some of us won't be here, probably. Uh, I won't be. But down the road, uh, it might be that those council members and the mayor will have to come up with money from the taxes, and we'll look back and say, why don't those guys spend this money and take it away from what it was supposed to do?
Yeah. If, if you spend this money, and as a result of this effort, nothing happens, we actually have no new economic growth, then all we've done is dig ourselves a hole. The hope would be that you, this produces economic growth and economic growth in terms of hotels and ho- and all that. And then, all of a sudden, the, the deficit at the conference center is very small, and so our overall numbers get better. But you don't know, you don't know that now. But we, in five years, it probably will be clear, you know, whether this was a wise investment that made a difference. Because what that theory is, is you grow your economy, which then allows you to then make up for those, that, that debt pay.
Just to piggyback on that, and, and this is a good question, and, and here's, here's a little ray light at the end of the tunnel, possibly, is, uh, it's on, as we speak, it's on the drawing boards, uh, for a, a new, uh, probably the largest hotel, uh, that we've had, that's, uh, going to start construction before long. And, uh, so that's what we're not getting money for now for the occupancy tax. So, that's one way that it would, and if we can get a few more of those, and, and certainly, we're on-
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, you said exactly what I was going to say. It's the, we could say it, right?
Yep. Uh, well, yeah.
Yeah.
I saw it.
From what I heard, it's going to be the Hilton Garden.
It is.
Um, and it's going to be over behind, um, Ruby Tuesday's and-
Wild Wings down.
Wild Wings down that way. So, there is economic development coming that way, so that might be able to offset that somewhat.
Right. Questions, comments? Okay. I believe that we have a motion and a second. Does anyone want to hear it again? All in favor of the motion, raise your hand, please. Okay. All opposed? Okay. One opposed. And clerk, thank you very much. Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you for much of your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you. What I'd like to do, if it's, uh, agreeable with the council, is I would like to, uh, move item 12 and 13, uh, down and bring up item 14 and go back to 12 and 13 afterward. Uh, item 14, is that okay?
Yeah.
Uh, nobody's hitting. Item 14 is Facilities Management Committee meeting report. Uh, it is our number 14 in the exhibits. Uh, presentation is, well, I hear, is presentation is, uh, by the Mayor Pro Tem Brenda Craig, who is chairwoman of the, of the committee. Ms. Craig?
Oh, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that. Uh, this, this report is based on a meeting that was held, uh, on Monday, June the first, which was yesterday, uh, at 5:30. The agenda item was the discussion of potential management firms for the Gastonia Conference Center. Uh, you have this report in front of you, uh, as a, uh, single sheet. The committee discussed the options of the two management firms, Culinaire and Stellar Platinum, which were interviewed on May 18th, 2015. Also, at the request of the committee on May 18th, staff provided a detailed narrative and proposed budget for management of the Gastonia Conference Center as a city department. Uh, that was the discussion last night, where it was between, uh, the city taking on the management responsibilities for the conference center, uh, also the, uh, Culinaire, because they had been interviewed on May 18th, and Stellar Platinum had been, uh, interviewed also on May 18th. Uh, the committee discussed the various operational and maintenance aspects of the overall conference center management. After much discussion, and I will have to say, there was some, uh, there was a lot of discussion, uh, and, uh, everybody was able to give their opinion on how they felt like we needed to move forward. Uh, so after much discussion, the, the committee voted unanimously, three to zero, to recommend to full council to enter into a contract negotiation with Culinaire for management of the Gastonia Conference Center. The recommendation is not to sign a contract with them at this point in time, only to enter into, uh, a contract negotiation. Those negotiations will be conducted by the staff and will be brought back to the, uh, Management and Facility Committee, uh, for fine-tuning before it comes before the city council as a full city council vote. So, I put that in a form of a motion.
I will second.
There is a motion and a second discussion.
Yes, sir. I was there. I was on the non-committee member there, and I preached my sermon in support of, uh, Stellar Platinum and his staff. I still feel strongly about that way. And I didn't want to give them a three-year contract. Looks like we could have some type of, uh, of, uh, compromise and maybe extend them one year or something from now, because they're making pretty good headway. I understand one eight thousand dollars in profit, in profit that they've made. I understand it's eighteen thousand dollars the last month or so, so, um, in, in a one-month period. So, you might want to ask, uh, Mr. Julius if, to give some information more about the profit he's made. He's making a lot of headway. And like I said, la- last night, committee meeting, that, that they started off in a hole. And, uh, they had to, to really pull themselves out of that hole in just seven months. And they've made enormous progress. And, uh, and you've got the Goliath is Culinaire, and you got the David that's, uh, that, uh, is, is Stellar Platinum. And I like the little guy. And I think they're doing a good job. And, and, of course, I lost, I went on a committee, but they voted three oh to not agree with, to, to go with what Ms. Craig said they're going to want to do. But I just plead with the other four here to, with the other three, but to, uh, to vote this down and give, uh, Stellar Platinum a, a continued chance to, to continue the progress they already making. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Um, go ahead, Ms. Craig.
Well, I was just going to say, I, I certainly, uh, agree with what, uh, Porter has said. There was a lot of conversation about the good work that, that Stellar Platinum has been doing. Uh, and great, great passion, but that we really wanted to see, see how we could take and get to a better financial bottom line in a shorter period of time, based on the pro forma that each one of those operations presented at the RFP. So, great job, great job. But at the same time, we also, uh, want to, to be sensitive to any negotiations with Culinaire as far as local, uh, keeping local people employed. Uh, and that will be probably end up being part of the negotiation as with, best we can. So, just, that's for information.
Mr. Mayor, I might say that Mr. Smith sent out an email saying that we really couldn't have any real say-so on who the, the new person, the new group is and how they employ people. Is that correct?
Uh, Councilman Curlin did, uh, ask a question that I responded to last week and, you know, emphasized that to stay in the safe harbor rules for a qualified management contract under the IRS regulations, that we would want the contract to specify that they are in charge of hiring and firing.
Thank you.
Mr. Gallagher. And then, Mr. Kim.
Ash, I'd also like to put in that item as well, to make sure that there is a non-compete clause in there within a certain radius, so we don't run into what we ran into last time, um, with the Wilderman Group and the place in Shelby. Um, the other thing is, Mr. Mayor, um, Melody, Stellar Platinum, did they lose a hundred thousand dollars or is it two hundred thousand dollars?
Right now, Stellar Platinum's budget, their operational budget is 38,006. They requested in March a 15,000 dollar advance for cash flow issues. Um, of the conference center operating loss this year, the city is funding about a hundred and six thousand dollars through utilities, through website, through, um, our Delphi contract, HVAC maintenance, that type of thing.
So, the, the total amount of that, is that the 38 plus the 15 plus the 106?
Yeah. Kind of. Then you have to add what we had paid to the Wilderman Group for the first few months of the year. Okay? So, the loss is estimated this year for, for, let me not say the loss. The expense for the conference center this year is estimated to be over 300,000 dollars.
300,000 dollars. Okay.
But that includes what we paid the Wilderman Group, as well as the buyout of that management contract, um, uh, everything included.
But right now, without the payment of the Wilderman Group, it comes out to 159,000. Plus, we got more months ahead of us. And there's going to be utilities and that type of thing going on as well.
That 159 is for your seven, eight-month period.
Eight-month period. So, we got four mon- months to go for a year. So, utilities and all, this 159 is not static. It's not like, this is it. It's, it can increase to be 200.
Yes.
Okay. Um, and also, uh, I know we will never break even with the conference center. Um, one of the questions that, um, Mayor Pro Tem Craig said, um, she had asked Stellar, how long is it going to take to break even? And they said eight years. And they said eight years. Eight years is way a long time. I, I just, you know, being a businessperson and in the banking business, I, I just don't feel comfortable with that. Eight years is a long time to keep taking losses. I'm looking for, the other firm said that they could bring it down within a three-year period to a $13,000 loss. And that's one thing that intrigues me. The other thing that intrigues me is they're right in Charlotte. They're at Trade and Tryon, and they're at Embassy Suites. And they look to get businesses there that are going to be coming in, and they want to sell the hotel that they're in as well. Well, sometimes I'm sure they get, from time to time, day trippers that just want to rent it for the day. Well, those guys can turn it over to us, since they just want people to be there, you know, for the weekend or so and have long stretches of time. I just think going with someone major like the firm that we interviewed would enhance the conference center, would allow the conference center to grow. I mean, we really haven't had a chance to really vet anybody. When we first came on board, Wilderman was here. We'd never had any say on it, this council had no say on it. We had say with, with Julius's group, and we saw where we're at right now. We're at $159,000 loss. And I, for the taxpayers, cannot stand up here and say, you know what? We had two groups, we weren't sure, we're going to continue to take a beating. I want to change for the better, and I think this is the best option we have. So I'm going to be voting for affirmative.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mel.
Thanks, Mel. Several points I'd like to make. Number one, I think that certainly we had some turbulent times. They go back to the, the closing of the facility when we had to remedy some structural issues. Then we moved forward, and through some negotiation on our legal counsel's part, Mr. Julius took over. I think we've seen demonstrable ability. I think we've seen a local company with ties to the mores and values of this community, of the county. And I think that we've seen adherence to a blueprint to move the conference center forward. Additionally, I would like, be it legal counsel or your office, Ed, I'd like to investigate if there are any current or pending claims for immigration violations or back pay issues for the Culonair Company. And specifically inclusive of that, any investigations either present or ongoing through the Department of Justice. And that's, that's all I have. I, I certainly share in, I think, that a, a great job. Brenda, you did a great job by the amount of time spent and the willingness to have these meetings. But I think that Mr. Julius's group has demonstrated in real time a blueprint to move the place forward, and I think you've done that, sir. And so that's, that's what my point is.
Colonel.
Of course, the, the first thing that, you know, everybody looks at when you look at the situation is one of, you know, a personal failure or rejection when, you know, someone says, we'd like to go somewhere else. And I want to tell you, and I think a lot, I think everybody here, I can speak for honestly, we think that you all have done a wonderful job. But I also think that you are at a total disadvantage compared to a larger firm. Now, it's my opinion, but, you know, if Mr. Julius was hit by a car and perished tonight or tomorrow, God forbid, the company would have a harder time in moving forward as compared to a company that's deeper. And I think one of the conversations we had yesterday was the depth of the other management firm with a lot of multiplicity in their, in their ranks. We saw this as an advantage over the long haul, that if there was changes that needed to be made, it seems like they've been responsible to that, responsive to those changes in other environments when we've checked their references. And then there's just some things that, you know, at this point in time, you're unable to do because of the size of your firm also. Things like the website maintenance, things like a certain level of the accounting, which can be done in-house with this other firm. So there are certain, you know, economies of scale involved with that. And again, this is not personal. This is just, you know, comparing one organization to another organization. And, you know, those are some of the things that we took into consideration when we were looking at this. You know, we'd love to keep you all on the payroll. I mean, I'm sure that's not going to be possible, but it's not totally impossible. I don't know what the future holds with this company. I don't know who they're going to look at, but I would imagine they should be looking at any and all of you, at least in the interview phase, to see, you know, because why would they not? You're, you're, you're running the show in the right direction. But it's a very difficult decision. I don't really think Culonair would have been there if it wasn't for the fact that they had a presence in Charlotte, because it's a very small operation. And for them, I think it's not going to be largely profitable. But I guess there's enough profit, they, they would consider looking at us. So, again, a very difficult decision. I would admit, I really do hope that they'll look at any and all of the staff that are currently employed. Hopefully, keep many of you on, because I think that, you know, you have done an excellent job. But I think over the long haul, there's some question as to whether or not you can continue to achieve the profits that this company could possibly do, so.
But, Mr., may I ask Mr. Campbell if you, if you feel comfortable answering me this? I was trying to pick up, I know it's going to shock you, but I'm not an attorney, and, and, but, but I, but I was trying to take in what you said is, and I don't know how to put it any, any nicer. Do you know something that we don't know when you said they have check-in with the Department of Justice, et cetera, et cetera, so whatever, I'm sure Ash got all that. But what, you, you got something there, you know, maybe that we might all know about?
I, I think that on the two particular areas that I indicated, Your Honor, I think that we should investigate those areas. There, I, I, I don't want to say anything more publicly. I think that it would be, we would be doing our due diligence to ensure that there are no pending immigration violations or settlements or those of any back pay issues. That's all I have to say.
Okay, so any other questions? Yes, sir.
I just kind of wanted to, to chime in on what Dr. Curlin said. And, and I see Rachel and Fred, and I think I saw Lauren come in. I don't see Al, but I've built a relationship with Al. And I just want to say thank you for the job that you've done. And just reiterate what Dr. Curlin said, this is, and I know Dr. Curlin said it's not personal, but it's hard not to take it personal, I know. And, and it's not a vote against you. I, I think each one of you has done an outstanding job. And I, I think Dr. Curlin said it best when he said, you're just kind of at a disadvantage in, in the size. And right now, it's, we feel like to get the finances of the conference center closer to where they need to be, going with the other firm will get us there quicker. And I certainly hope, even in our interview process with them, they said they'd be looking at, at local. And so I'm hoping to see some of your faces, if not all, stay right in that building. But, you know, I wish I could guarantee that, but of course I can't. But I just wanted to, to give you my thanks for the job that you've done thus far.
I, I look at that, this situation as being Stellar Group came in sort of like we came in. And for better or for worse, good or bad, we came in, we inherited the conference center. They, in, in a way, with us hiring them, they inherited the good, the bad, and the ugly. Good reports have, have been coming from a lot of people and a lot of companies. Is it possible, Mr. Attorney, to have a substitute motion that we keep on keeping on for a year and then go back? And the Culonair will certainly still be there, and, if necessary, and see if the situation changes in any way. Is there anyone out there that'd like to make that motion?
Yeah, I would.
I will second Mr. Councilman Mac here, please.
Okay, now, we'll just think about that a minute, is it, then we'll vote, is, is, and, and the reason I say that, there, there are, as we've all said, there are jobs at stake here. There are people's loyalty at stake here. I don't like change, if I don't have to have it. And I, but I know our limitations, and I know the good and the bad. We're not, I said that to you, and I've said it before, I, I, nothing, I don't know these people. But the, it just seems extremely unusual. And that's not knocking us, that's complimenting us. But would there be, they wouldn't be there if it wasn't, I guess, for the, the one in Charlotte. So they said that. But there's been a motion and a second to just leave everything like it is, hopefully for the better, for a year, and then review it. And then if we want to talk about a, a contract longer term at that time with whoever, all the council can do it in a year from now. And we've got a motion, we've got a second. Any other discussion or questions? Yes, sir.
The motion is just to leave everything as is, no changes at all? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah. To keep Stellar, one year, right now.
And not change anything in our agreement with Stellar?
Oh, well.
Throw it out there, what?
I, I mean, I'm just asking, are we going to enter into a new negotiation? I mean.
Yeah, that would be fine.
I'm talking about renewal, but if you have some changes, choose.
Yeah, some changes, yeah.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Are, are we saying we're going to enter into an agreement with Stellar to negotiate an extension for one year? Or are we saying we're just going to go automatically extend what's in place right now for one year? There's a huge difference there.
Yeah, I think what you're saying is good, that, that, that.
I, I think there were different, I think there were some different management terms in terms of what Stellar wanted going forward. So we would need to come to an agreement with them.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm sure they'd like to change some things.
We would be, there's, there's a motion to amend on the floor, but we would bring another con, if that, if the motion to amend passes, we would bring a negotiated contract with Stellar back to the council for approval.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because they had different things in their proposal from the current contractual situation, because they were doing it without management fees and things like that. So there were different terms on what they wanted to do going forward.
And you are, I was a second?
Yes, sir. I will second the modified motion.
Okay, any other questions, Ms. Anne? Yes, sir.
You know, if, we, we're turning, turning things around here. So if we're going to turn things around here, we're going to get some more information out on the table. Okay? So another part of the conversation last night was, you know, I love Brenda Craig. And she loves, you know, employing local people, okay? And I think that's wonderful, but, you know, maybe there's differences of opinion as what local is, okay? And we had this conversation last night. And, you know, when we're talking local, I think of Gaston County. You know, currently, Mr. Julius has an accountant who's in Shelby. He's got an attorney that's in Shelby. And I believe he has a second business that's in Shelby. And so I just want to get that out on the table, okay? That, that, that's a fact. Mr. Julius also has other interests other than the conference center. He runs a catering business, okay, outside the conference center, and he runs a restaurant outside the conference center. I think those all dilute his focus on the management of the conference center. So if you're going to change your motion, I'm going to say a little bit more then, and that's what I got to say.
Mr. Mayor, is it possible I could answer some questions?
Yes, sir, I'm going, I would allow that. I, I want to say first that, that, and then you step forward. I, I wanted to say that, that it is a difference of opinion. I, I consider Shelby is being, I went to wait, I can guard the way up, huh? I consider it is being quote-unquote Brenda local compared to Dallas, Texas. So, yes, sir, Mr. Julius?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Gallagher, I just want to clarify something. You asked a particular question, and that was how much money in eight months did Stellar Platinum lose?
Yes.
The answer to that question is $38,000. I said I was going to lose $38,000, that's how much money we're going to lose.
Okay, our accountant said different. The, the, the total loss so far, sir, without any of payments going to the Wilderman Group is $159,000.
That's because they don't pay for everything.
Right. We're paying for everything. Right. I'm talking about the total cost of the conference center.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir, I thought you, you specifically said how much money has Stellar Platinum lost? I thought that was your question.
Whatever, whatever losses on the bottom line there, it's $159,000.
Understood that, sir.
And that's something that needs to be made up. It's not something that's going to be a shell game.
Oh, no, sir.
I mean, we're talking about the accounting and the utilities and all that that get involved with it, with opening of the building itself. It's not just catering.
No, 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 sir, I understand that. All I'm saying is that when we entered into this agreement, the city said we will pick up these expenses, which I'm well aware of, because they had been in my budget from the beginning. We entered into the contract by saying, here, Stellar, you have $38,000 to lose, that's it. And when we started, we actually projected to lose closer to $100,000 in those eight months. We've got it down to the 38 that we said we were going to do. Mr. Kirk, we're talking about my residency.
Didn't mention your residency.
My business?
Yes.
Okay. I can be anywhere running my business in 20 to 25 minutes. I spend anywhere between 70 to 80 hours a week in that building. And so without question, I am never distracted, and you can speak to any of my staff. I would love to be able to, and my company and my partner, simply extend the contract as we have currently for one year, and let us prove to you that this momentum that we have going can be achieved, and those losses will be much less. I'm standing here telling you that. With all the honesty, no smoke and mirrors, we, in seeing the results of selling $68,000 last month and driving a profit of $17,500, and then you, sir, you take the utilities and you take the, the marketing, we would still have a profit, that's the goal. But I'm never going to lie to you and say, well, I can do it in three years. I need a little bit more time to get the, where we actually can be. If you can break every month even, that is my goal. That's our company's goal, that's all everybody's goal. But to make a change right now, to have the, the thousands of people that come through that know me and my staff by name, and make another change? And I'm not speaking for my company, I'm speaking from what's best for the city and the conference center. If there's any questions, I really have nothing else further.
Do you want to have any questions from Mr. Julius?
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, sir. Okay, see, I believe there's a motion and a second. No.
Yes, a motion to amend, that was, that was. Yeah, and it is.
Okay, no other questions on that? Everyone knows what they're voting for.
First, you vote on, on the substitute motion.
We're voting on substitute motion. All in favor of the substitute motion as presented, raise your hand. Okay, all opposed? Okay, motion is defeated. The, okay, now, we're ready to vote on the.
Original motion.
The original motion.
Can you clarify the original motion, please?
The, the original motion was to the recommendation of the committee to recommend to full council to enter into contract negotiations with Culonair for the management of the Gastonia Conference Center. That's the motion. But I would also add to that motion the information that Councilman Kimball brought to the table tonight as part of the due diligence of the negotiation. And I don't know whose second they added.
I did.
Can you second that motion?
I, I can second that motion.
Okay.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any questions?
I, I.
Yes, sir.
Our current contract with Stellar. Now, we extended that, so, for a couple of months, how long does that go?
I think, uh, till October first, is that?
I believe so.
I think, so, month, yeah, I think so. I think it's a month to month.
Right.
It goes as far as September thirtieth, October first, yes.
Okay, and in that time, I mean, because we've set some parameters for the negotiations with Culonair. So, we would have all of that done?
I would think it's highly likely that we would be able to have something on the agenda by the second meeting in July.
Because there's some things there, you know, like, what Kimball said, some other things that are important to this council that if Culonair can't meet those benchmarks, then we need to just fold those negotiations and go back. So, I mean, it, it kinda needs to be done rather quickly, so I just wanted to clarify all that before we got into it. I didn't want us to be coming back a year from now saying, well, we're still talking, I mean.
I, I think intent would be to go forward, but there are, there are times when we, we select, the, the council selects the first firm, and there's a problem with negotiating a contract, and then we report that back to the council, and typically, we would either rebid the whole thing, or else go to the second firm, and then negotiate the contract there.
Ready to vote?
Yes, sir.
All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. One, two, three, four. All opposed? One, two, three. Land and Forest, questions? Okay, four to three. Okay, thank you very much. Oh, courthouse, I think, all for. Call for break, it's courthouse. I'm twelve, approval of the Citizen Contribution Assistance Program and Low Interest Loans Program to be added to the existing Off-Ride-Away Stormwater Program. Presentation, Mr. Dale Denton, Division Manager of Field Operations, and Mr. Robert Kloniger, Stormwater Utility Administrator. Mr. Dent.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, sir.
Members of council.
Kloniger.
As you recall, Pub Works and Utilities previously brought the Stormwater Utilities Citizen Contribution Assistance Program to you for consideration back in April. Based on your concerns at the time, we've worked closely with the city's Housing and Neighborhoods Department, and hopefully have addressed those issues that we're gonna present tonight. I'm gonna let Robert Kloniger, our Utility Administrator in Stormwater, go over those agenda items with you. Robert.
Mr. Mayor, members of council.
You go first.
I guess the Exhibit A is, um, the Right-Away Citizen Contribution Assistant Program. It's, um, we looked at it a month or so ago, um, we, we revisited the, the dollar amounts and raised those up. We increased the, the minimal by another ten thousand dollars, to kind of broaden our, I guess, target audience for who we wanna help in this particular program. And we also kind of graduated it, so you have a hundred percent assistant at a particular rate, at the, um, twenty-six nine, and then, um, seventy-five percent assistant at the forty-seven oh seven five, and then, once you go beyond that, there is, uh, there is no assistance, however, then you could enter the low-interest loan portion, which is the Exhibit B, that, uh, that is, um, in front of you. Does that, um, as far as the, um, the low-interest loans, those are kind of very similar at how community development does any kind of rehab for, um, homes that need some, some repairs. Myra them's gonna facilitate that as well, same concept, just, just a different, um, product, so to speak.
Any questions, Mr. Kloniger, Mr. Gallagher, or Mr. Kimball?
Mr. Kloniger, I have to say that I'm so grateful that, um, Councilman Pierceall brought this, uh, forward, because at the time, I think it was, what, fourteen or sixteen thousand? That a person would have to have as a median income?
Yes, sir.
This is more realistic, and I'm just really, really pleased to see that, because there's one constituent that's in my area that desperately needs this, um, without a doubt. I spoke to her today, she's thrilled, and I know her, her house is like one of the top ones that has to get done, because when it rains, her property looks like a moat, I'm telling you, it's just really bad. But anyway, um, thank you for coming back with that.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Kimball?
Thank you, your honor. Two questions, uh, one.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Doc. First one, uh, do we have anything in here where, um, the particular homeowner has made application for or been denied a home equity loan?
Uh, we do not, sir, no, this is basically, um, they come to us for assistance, uh, we, as a Stormwater team, evaluate the problem, prioritize it one, two, or three, and then, typically, um, they pay the ten percent, and then either the city does it, or they pay all of it, and we reimburse them ninety percent. As far as a home equity, no, sir, there's nothing.
Reason I'm asking that, sir, is when we look at the low-interest loan program, I see that they have household incomes between forty-seven zero seven five and sixty-three two hundred, and, um, for our per capita here, that's, uh, that's somewhat of a substantial, uh, income, and I just wonder if they hadn't, you know, why hadn't they gone to a bank first? Or had they gone to a bank to try and, uh, secure financing for this instead of coming to the city? So, I, I'm, I'm not, um, where, where do we stand on that?
Well, basically, the, the low-interest loan was kind of thrown in there as a, um, because the, the sixty-three two, the cap for the low-interest loan is, is, that is the median income for a family of four within the Charlotte metro area. Those are federal HUD numbers that come from the, um, Charlotte Gastonia Rock Hill region. So, that's kind of where we got the numbers, as far as the, the threshold. As for a family of four, sixty-three two is, is the median household income.
Okay, so, uh, so in other words, they would have, they would, would have to make any application to any other financial entity before they came to us for a low-interest loan, is that correct?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay, nothing further, sir?
Other questions? Yes, sir?
I have one question, um, thank you for redoing this, this looks a whole lot better than what we saw the first time, so I appreciate the effort there, and mine just kinda has a little bit to go along with, um, Mr. Kimball's not about getting a loan from anywhere else, but if we do one of these loans and they move, fail to pay, and they, this, I, this would go against your property just like a bank loan would, it's, it's a lien against the property, correct?
It is, it is not, there, there is no lien, um, as we spoke with Myra pertaining to that, um, it's similar to the, I guess, the five thousand dollar down payment for, um, I guess, the, um, incentives that we had for Uptown, and, um, and any kind of, um, improvements that, uh, a citizen needs for their home. We do not put liens on the property.
Is that what you would recommend? This is, I understand this is assistance and we're trying to help, and, and I get that way with, for the off-rite, but for the, for the low-interest loans that would be like in a right-of-way, or we're actually going on their property to do it, it kinda worries me that we could possibly pay, you know, thousands, thousands, thousands of dollars, and they're like, that's just the city, they can't do anything to us.
You mean like, taking out a note and deed of trust?
Yeah, or, or, or improve the property so now I can sell it. Yeah, they improve my property, I'll sell it, and I'm not gonna pay the city back.
And I didn't have to try anywhere else before I got any assistance.
That's the only thing that worries me, and, and, and I favor this, don't get me wrong, I like this, if this is all kind of illegal, do we not have any legal way we can force payment?
Well, we could do, the way to do it would be to take a note and a deed of trust in, in those cases, we need to, we need to, I tell you what, approve the program tonight, and we'll try to work that up and bring that part back, rather than take the whole thing back.
No, I, yeah, I'm, I'm all for the program, I just wanna make sure the city has.
We, I mean, we just approached it that way, we approached it as an assistance program, and the one in Myra's area is, you know, sometimes something that you wind up writing off, so, that was kind of, you know, if you're gonna take a loss, you were assuming you were gonna take a loss, we weren't thinking about deeds of trust, no one really raised that issue, but we can look at that if you want to.
Mr. Gallagher?
Ash, can we divide this? Can we do the Off-Ride-Away Stormwater Pro- Program, uh, Citizen Contribution Assistant Program, vote on that tonight?
It'd be easier to just approve it and let us bring back a component for deeds of trusts and, uh, notes for the, for the onsite properties, unless somebody in the staff thinks I'm wrong on that, but I, I think that'd be easier to do.
And?
Are there any other questions?
No, I was gonna say, I'll make the motion to approve as presented by staff.
Discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, it passes.
We will bring, we will take that as direction to bring back.
Back with the final approval.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, thank y'all. He's got me messed up, so where are we now?
I think we're on thirteen now.
Thirteen, okay.
Yeah, it's a budget.
Item number thirteen, adoption of fiscal year twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen annual budget. City Manager Ed Munn.
Madam Mayor, pro tem, members of council, uh, this is the formal adoption of the budget, and it's broken into four parts. We have the adoption of the budget ordinance for fiscal year twenty fifteen, sixteen, that's the annual budget, the adoption of the project ordinance, uh, for community development, then the adoption of the project ordinance for our capital projects, and then finally, we have two budget changes. Let me go, do that in reverse order, the, uh, the, the item under thirteen, changes to the proposed budget. The only two changes we have, whenever the budget was put together, if you recall in.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Munn, where are you?
Okay, it would actually be Exhibit thirteen thirteen?
Thirteen thirteen, okay. All right, thank you.
And so, the, the only two changes, uh, in the general fund, there was, uh, if you recall, the contracted services for next year for the pool. We are no longer, uh, going to be having our own employees, uh, hiring those, the kids for the summer. We're actually working with, uh, with the firm. That contract amount was not included in the budget, it needs to be, so then, that, that was, uh, an oversight, so that is being added. There's that, and a, and a mileage item. The other change is under Stormwater, in Stormwater, what we're doing there is providing the, some additional funds for off-ride-away. It is moving funds from the right-of-way category to off-ride-away, so it's helping, providing more assistance. And, uh, those are the only two changes from the budget that we've talked about. And of course, the.
I understand the Stormwater.
The one where we hired the, the private company for the pools, where is that?
Uh, that's the item at the very top, under General Fund, Fund Balance. There's, yeah, there's seventy-nine thousand five hundred dollars for contracted services, and then there's eight hundred dollars for mileage, and then that's balanced against the eighty thousand three hundred in fund balance.
But.
Because what happened was, we took the people out of the budget, see, they originally were, all those part-time employees were in the budget.
I get that.
So, as we took them out, we didn't put the contract back in, so you gotta, it actually saves us money this year, but we, we only took it out of the, took it out of one side, but we didn't add it in the other.
Okay, I, I've got you there, okay. For revenues, we're crediting the eighty-three hundred, and then under expenditures, we're bringing in the eighty-three hundred. Am I right, I should do it for a living? No, I'm good with it, I was just trying to follow along.
Didn't flip enough paint.
So. So, so, uh, so for the rest of the budget items, again, uh, this is good news for, I think, people that live in Gastonia. There is no, uh, tax increase, there is no electric rate increase, there's no water rate increase, there's no sewer rate increase, there's no stormwater increase. Where we're putting our money this year are, we are putting two extra significant payments, almost two million dollars, into our roads, into resurfacing roads, city streets within Gastonia. We are moving forward on our capital projects, the water plant, the, 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 also the, uh, electric substation. We're also making improvements at Phillips Center, in terms of their, 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 their surface at, in, inside the gymnasium. Some improvements, about seventy-some thousand improvements at Sims Legion Park, and a number of other things that we discussed. So, uh, this is the budget that we talked about, it's balanced, and we're ready to move forward. And, um, Melody, do we do four different motions, or one motion? Four, I think, right? Three, because the, the, the other one's a change, yeah, yeah, just three, three, three motions. So, the first motion would be for the adoption of the budget ordinance for fiscal year twenty fifteen, sixteen annual budget.
Second move. Second.
All right.
He's back.
Motion had a second? All right. All in favor? Okay, opposed?
And then, the, the second one is the adoption of the project ordinance for fiscal year twenty fifteen, sixteen, Community Development Block Grant Budget.
Second move. Second.
Motion's second, discussion? Okay, all in favor? Your Honor?
And, and finally, the adoption of the project ordinance for fiscal year twenty fifteen, sixteen Capital Projects Budget.
Second move.
This is second?
Second.
Question? All in favor? Thank you, sir. Item fifteen, I think, is, would be, were you through, we were through with that one?
Yes, sir.
You said the final one there. Item fifteen, citizen committee appointments needed for twenty fifteen, sixteen. Let's flip over there, here it is. Community Development Citizens Advisory Board, Todd, is you?
I don't have you, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Huh? There it is, I, it took me a while to find it, you're, you're looking at this. Last page, right there. Last page in the book. Yes, sir, Mr. Kimball?
I have a nomination for the Community Development Citizens Advisory Board, two-year term, and award number one, and that would be Dr. Pierre Crawford, two-two-three-one, Winborn Drive. He has expressed interest in being on this board. I, through the assistance of, uh, Mr. Munn's office, I was able to give him the parameters and, uh, the approximate meeting schedules, and he believes that he could be an active member of this group, and would be enthusiastically embrace, uh, this, this appointment.
Suggest closing nominations.
No, motion to close.
All right. Vote on that, please, all in favor?
And, before you go off of this subject, I only had one listed, Mr. McHale's back just in time, he, uh, he has a, a nomination that he wants to, uh, add to this list here.
Which one, the community development?
No, sir.
No, this is, uh, Yorkchester.
Oh.
It's, uh.
It's not on the agenda.
Not on, okay.
The gentleman, um, it's on there. Is, is, excuse me. The gentleman's on there, is, uh, the, not, not this guy, not Matt Bradshaw, but, uh, the gentleman's on there now, he's moving back to chair of, sold his house, so he's no longer eligible. And this gentleman lives around the corner from him, Matt Bradshaw, and I've got these.
What, what's the gentleman's name that we're taking off? That, that would help. Huffstler.
Brad Huffstler.
So, we're removing Brad Huffstler from the historic.
Historic district.
District.
Yeah, and, and Matt Bradshaw will fill the unexpired term. And, uh, so, uh, he's volunteered to do it, it's hard to find good people, and he's, uh, graduated from Appalachian, moved to Gastonia January two thousand and six. Is a two SM West Fifth, he has fifteen years' experience in financial services. He also took his house and remodeled it, fixed it up, and that's what we're looking for, people that have that experience. And he currently works for FRO and Associates in Charlotte, and I'd had some money invested with them at one time, and, uh, so, uh, it's a good company, so.
As you do.
Anyway, it wasn't, wasn't one much. But, uh, so I would recommend him, and, you know, try to find somebody that would take his place, that could be willing to do it, and he agreed to do it, and he'll, he'll do a real good job, I think, so, I'd like to nominate Matt Bradshaw.
Second here.
Second. And, 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 and motion to close the nomination point, Matt, Matt, yeah.
Okay, all in favor? All right, see you now. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Now, we have Pierre for Community Development, and we still have two vacancies there, and of course, the Recreation Advisory, uh, Board, three-year term. Mr. Sim is interested, but he's not.
Your honor, I, I, I have, uh. Your Honor, I, I have attempted to reach out to Mr. Sim as late as today to determine whether he would be able to positively impact his attendance in the future. I have not received a communication back from him, sir, but I am still actively working on it, both with him and within the community.
Great. That's good. That's all we can do. Yes?
Mr. Mayor, at our last council meeting, I had put forth a name for the advisory for the Farmers Board. Bill Gross cannot serve. The other thing I did learn from our esteemed attorney, Ash Smith, he did say that we cannot increase that board at all, so it's a win-win situation. So, just want to let everybody know.
Right. Okay, item sixteen, discussion of body worn camera pilot installation program grant. Presentation, Mr. Rob Hilton, Gastonia Police Chief.
And, I was gonna just introduce it a little bit, because I really ask Chief Hilton, and also, you're not Todd Carpenter, are you?
That's not-
No, no, no.
I'm not into this current Todd Carpenter.
This is Beverly, Beverly Beaker. And one of the things that we wanted to talk a little bit about is there was a, there's a grant out that we could apply for. It's a federal grant. It's a fifty-fifty match, local dollars. It doesn't pay for any of the money for storage, which is a whole lot of this whole project. But we've been working with a really good pilot program. We have twelve cameras within the PD now, and we wanted to talk a little bit about where we are. If we made application for this federal program, they wanted us all to go together, all the jurisdictions, and it's a good thing to do ultimately, but it's way, way too early, because as we're getting into this, we're finding the complexities of it. And so, just wanted to have Chief Hilton to talk a little bit from the PD's perspective, and Beverly a little bit from the IT perspective, so you can see kind of where we are. Because this is a very important issue, and it's going to be one for us as we go forward.
And certainly, this was a very competitive grant, too, and I think the cutoff for it is June fifteenth, if I'm not mistaken, to apply. And so, this would be a very rushed thing to try to pull together. And as you know, we are currently working on a pilot. We're looking at the best practices, looking at what people around us are doing, what cameras they're using, what problems they're encountering, and we're also monitoring other grants and other possibilities, funding sources, as we move along. I do commend Sheriff Kloniger. Sheriff Kloniger called all of us together, all the police chiefs and managers that could come, to come together and just talk about this issue, and talk about how we should move forward. And the thought was with this grant that maybe we could all join, but we found that there were some difficulties with some of the agencies. We don't have fiber run to those agencies. Really, the only ones that really could come on board practically would be us, the sheriff in Gaston County. Some of the small towns were supportive, but really practically couldn't come on board because there's not fiber run to their jurisdiction. But I do commend him for getting us all together, talking about how we're going to, you know, how storage is going to happen, what cameras are we going to use, what's going to be best practices. So if nothing else, we engaged that and began to have that conversation. So even not doing this grant, even if we don't move forward with this grant, certainly, that was a good start for all of us to be on that. Just kind of an update, if I could, kind of where we're at. We have twelve cameras out in the field. This is the fifth week, and so far, just to kind of give you some magnitude of how big this is, we've generated thirteen hundred records. We've used about three hundred and seventy-two gigabytes of the server. So if you think about that, and you multiply that times ten for a hundred and twenty cameras, and you multiply that times twelve, you know, you're talking about forty-four thousand or so gigabytes. Now, of course, practically, all of that won't be on there, because, you know, at ninety days, some records will go away, and we won't have to retain everything, but it's just a huge amount of data rolling in, and that's really the biggest part of this, is how we're going to manage that and how we're going to move forward with the data storage.
And we have to, we have to consider redundancy. So you're just talking about not one storage device, but you need two. Tape backup is not feasible. We're talking about too much data. So, you know, there's a lot, lots to consider. You know, we're estimating in a three-year period about forty terabytes of data.
Forty terabytes of data?
And that's for the city of Gastonia.
For just the city of Gastonia for the next three years. Now, yeah, I think Todd was explaining to me what terabytes of data are. So for our current system that we've been keeping since the nineties, how much is that? Can you talk a little bit about what that really means in terms of size?
We're sitting around nine terabytes now, and we're not near completing that storage. That's going to last us for many, many, many years. Okay, but that's what we've purchased for the PD data. Talking about a large, large amount of data. And just depending on what happens with the House bills, how long we have to keep this data, how things are flagged, yeah, so a lot can flush out.
Clarity comes through the state and federal government in terms of how long this is, and because not only our police department, but police departments all across the country and across the state are facing this issue.
Question.
Can I-
Mr. Gallagher, Mr. McEachran.
Okay. The cameras, do they run through the officer's laptop within the squad car itself?
No, they're actually bringing those back in and putting them in a docking station and downloading.
Because if they ran through the laptop itself, they can have an external hard drive that data could be put onto, isn't that correct?
Right, but then ultimately, that hard drive needs to get merged into the larger storage.
But it's also another source for another backup.
True. True, and I'm not sure of the solution that they're looking at, if that's feasible or not.
It would also be another avenue to tamper or destroy.
Yeah, but it's also going back to headquarters as well.
One of the things, too, that we have found that's been another part of this, and it's been time-consuming for the supervisors, is when the record that is created is attached to a criminal investigation or a felony case, they're coming back and downloading that to a CD.
Okay.
And so that takes some time to download to a CD, and they're having to make two CDs, one for us to put into property to keep as a permanent record, the other to send to the DA's office, so they have a copy of the case file if it's attached to a case. So they're making two CDs for any record that's tied to a criminal investigation, and that, we have found, has been very time-consuming for the supervisors to do that. I mean, some are being tied up for even hours, recording this and downloading this. So one of the things that we've talked about as well is, we're almost certainly going to have to have someone assigned full-time to handle these records and merging and keeping up with all this, and also being able to pull records when there's a request, public request for a record, to be able to go back and pull that and record it and send it out.
Mr. McEachran.
The chief has answered my question, because I was wondering about a backup where you could may lose it, the valuable information that you would need for a case, but if you're making the CDs for future possible felony cases, then you've got the backup there. That was my question. Thank you.
Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Your Honor. Two questions, chief. Number one, where are we with making copies for defense attorneys in the Discovery Avenue? Have we gotten there yet?
We make a copy for the district attorney's office, and then it's upon him to make a copy if there's a request from a defense attorney.
Okay.
He makes a copy from a defense.
Thank you, chief. Secondly, where are we with the officers wanting to review and having the proper areas for them to do that, to ensure that their written reports or other documents are specific to what was recorded on the body cam?
That is something we're moving towards. There was a request that came in from investigations to actually be able to review the videos, and certainly, we feel they should be able to do that, because they're ultimately responsible for the case they're presenting to the district attorney, and they need to see any videos that are out there and be able to review those. So we're making arrangements now to make that happen. We've not worked that all out yet, but we're making arrangements so that they can see those.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Any other questions? Do we take action on this?
With regard to this current storage, it sounds like so far, all the storage is in a hard-based avenue. Nothing's gone to the cloud yet.
That is correct. We've talked about it. We feel like legal needs to make some calls on that first. That could possibly be our DR site, so rather than having a second server local to Gastonia, the cloud could be that. But again, things just need to get flushed out.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, we need to be protected.
Right. Thanks.
Folks, those of us who don't really understand, there's too much, you know, age-wise. It came out about the storage, and is, am I corrected, that they have not said that time that you keep this, these, this, whatever, sort of like income tax returns, you don't know how long you have to keep these, is that's right?
Retention laws are in place, and, you know, I would guess that these retention laws were written before all of these things have come forward, so those could change as we move forward. But right now, for example, for a felony investigation, we have to keep that for twenty years, an unsolved misdemeanor case indefinitely. And so, I will, I will say this, too, if I could, that already, we're seeing some benefits of having this camera footage with criminal investigations, to have this as a part of the criminal investigation and documenting exactly what happened, what was said, what the scene looked like, that type of thing. In addition to that, we're also seeing a lot of benefits to our administrative investigations, where a complaint may come in about something that happened or about something that was said. We've had a couple of cases already where we were able to resolve a complaint very quickly and very efficiently by just pulling that video and looking at exactly what took place, exactly what the officer said, and was able to clear that up very quickly.
Now, chief, have we, we've not shared those with the complainant, though. We've just said-
We have not.
We've got video, and we've looked at it, and this is what we see.
That is correct.
And so far, that's been-
That's correct. It's all been internal and part of our internal investigation.
Right.
Chief, it's hard to say, because you need crystal ball. Do you know when the legislature, I guess, the North Carolina body is going to be able to come through with a crafted item to say, this is it? Is there a certain timeframe they have to say, you know, how we're going to store it and all that? Are they working on that, or?
You know, I-
They are, they are working on it now, and they may get something done now, but I think over the next two or three sessions of the General Assembly, that this state legislature, as well as Congress, will be changing as the technology changes. So there's just conversations. So they're going to, they're working on something now, but I don't know whether that's, you know, where that is, but I would guess, not only this session, but the next couple of sessions, till we finally get all this stuff straight.
See, the problem with it is, you know, citizens are expecting us to go with this technology, and the part they don't understand is nine terabytes, forty terabytes of information, and that's for a given year?
Three.
No, that's for three.
Three years. That's a lot of info.
Yeah, there's not really a best practices out there yet, and I think we're kind of part of that right now. And I can tell you that talking with police chiefs across the state, this is a conversation they're all having, and we're all kind of talking to each other, looking at each other of what we're doing and where the successes and failures are at, and trying to move forward with it. But this is a conversation that's not just happening here, it's happening across North Carolina, across really the nation.
So, Mayor, there's no action. We just wanted to let you know what the state affairs are, and we, this is a very serious issue, and it's an issue that the public is interested in, and you're going to get questions, and we'll just let you know what we're doing, and we'll continue to report back to council.
I have one question.
Yes.
As far as the cameras, how many are there?
There's twelve right now.
Twelve, okay. Ratio, who has those? Not who, but in what divisions are they?
Mostly, those are all assigned on the patrol division and across the districts.
Okay.
And we're trying to put them out there with folks that have been, you know, very active, very involved, just to get a good idea of what that data return is going to be.
Do they rotate?
They're assigned to the officer.
Okay, they're assigned to the officer. Good. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, folks, very much. We knew it was coming, didn't we? Okay. Get the message, okay. Item seventeen, city attorney's report.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, sir. City manager's report.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, just a few things. The electric, but most of them are good. Electric cities just got an email that they, the bonds were approved by a local government commission. They'll actually be going out for sale in July, so that is all moving forward. Also, the new truck, the new fire truck, the rescue truck, not the one that we're approving in this budget, but the one we approved in the last budget, will be arriving on Monday, but the Chief Welsh will bring it to the next city council meeting, so you can see it.
Do we get rides?
I don't know.
I'm saying, I see if Gallagher could ride in it.
So-
Somebody fall off.
Yeah, the, uh-
Me, 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 me.
Next, the General Assembly, which is in session now, and the House has sent the budget over to the Senate. The Senate, one of the things it's doing, Senator Ruccio and Senator Hunter, and now there's a third option to redo the sales tax, and that's two-point-two billion dollars, and there, there are these different formulas. Most of the formulas that are produced have us pretty flat to where it's up a percent or down a percent. We're right around there. There are some winners and losers, like Charlotte Mecklenburg would be a loser. There, the county, Gaston County is a winner, but the cities, it depends on which option they go with. There's not specific movement in the Senate yet on that sale, special sales tax for cities, the one that Representative Sane proposed, so that's, I'm not sure where that's going to go. The other one is, will we get some money to have business registration because we lost the privilege license? So a lot of the discussion now is in the Senate. If you get a chance to talk to Kathy, you know, try to get replacement revenues for the city. We just want to be hell harmless. We want to be able to have, well, not only that, a little bit of growth as time goes on. So that's some of the issues there. The other issue is, has to do with pile bill funds, our road funds. The changes that the state is making actually reduces the gas tax a bit, which will then be a reduction to us. We're ten percent of the gas tax revenues, but the state's going to make it up in these extra fees. Those extra fees are going a hundred percent to the state, so we could lose a little through this. So anyway, that's what's going on there. Also, Larry Ware passed away. He was a member of the Historic District Commission, and I think they're receiving friends on Thursday. And then the final thing is that we need a groundbreaking sometime in June, right? Matt? Before July, because-
Or July.
Fourth of July?
O-R.
Or.
Yeah, Fourth of July. You be there.
Or July.
Or July.
Yes. Because, because when will the real work be, begin?
For what?
On the Clearwell. This is for the water plant.
I'm sorry.
You said groundbreaking, I'm like, what?
It's water, just city.
Good evening, folks.
For the water plant.
Notice to proceed was originally going to be issued, hopefully, you know, at least tentatively, starting the week after the July fourth holiday. That may be pushed just a little bit by the schedule and the work that has to be done, the agreements that have to be reached, all of which will be coming to you probably for that July twenty-first meeting. We were thinking, kind of maybe a little naively, that we would try to do the groundbreaking for the June sixteenth council meeting, where you could, you know, at five o'clock, it was a suggestion that was made, where you could do the groundbreaking and then just go down the street to the meeting, try to make it as convenient as possible. I know there may be issues with that. That also is fairly close, so we really, I think the manager and Flip and I were looking to get your guidance on, you know, when you might be interested in having that. Obviously, the further we go, the hotter it's going to get, but at the same time, it's[1739.62] uh, it's tough to coordinate all the schedules. So we're really looking for your guidance. The suggestion had been the sixteenth at five o'clock before the council meeting for the, the ceremony and, uh, the shovels and all that, uh, the photos. Um, but, um, just really looking for your guidance as to, um-
Are they gold shovels?
Sometimes they're painted gold.
Right.
They spray pa, they get a gold spray paint and they-
Just do it tomorrow morning. I mean, the ground will be softened up.
They usually get some light sand so we don't have to go into the red clay.
Any questions?
Just plan, just plan something.
That's right.
Just plan something.
Okay. We'll do. All right, thank you.
Did we just date very much?
So do, we just need to get a date? Is there a convenient date for the council? Or do you want, you want us to send you an email and-
Can we not do it on a non-meeting day? You know, I'm going to be there an hour.
Yeah, it's at the council's pleasure.
The next meeting's the sixteenth? The next meeting's the sixteenth?
Sixteenth.
So the, the, the week after that is the twenty-third, is that okay for everybody, the twenty-third? What time, five-thirty?
Aren't you going to be in Gota, Mayor?
Five-thirty, good?
Wait a minute, which month you, Doc?
June, June twenty-third.
She said July, didn't she?
You may be in Go, are you in Gota?
June, you, oh, you're in Gota, okay.
You're in Gota.
No? When you back?
The mayor part time can just do two shows.
It's several weeks from tonight, the thirtieth. Thirtieth of June, June.
Would that be a good time?
No.
No, okay.
But, Matt, could you send out a couple of dates?
Yes.
We'll just check. Because otherwise, we'll be here about eleven o'clock. Pick a couple of dates that are good for you, send them out. We'll check. How's that sound?
Sounds fine. And, uh-
If, if we can't make it, just Photoshop us in.
Exactly, exactly.
It'll be in the cloud, Dan.
And Mayor, the last thing I have is, is I just passed out this sheet.
Yeah.
And this is an internal sheet that we have, uh, we've been, it, it actually existed whenever the city decided to go build a conference center. Well, how are you going to pay the, the bonds back? It changes as events change, and, uh, this was given to the Tourism Development Board at its last meeting. Uh, and the yellow line that runs across is the new budget for twenty sixteen for the Tourism Development Board. But if you want to see what makes up the debt and a little bit of the Shill Museum debt, and where the money's going and where the money's coming from MSD revenues, and that is the downtown tax district, and what the projections are for like revenues, the green all the way over on the left are all the revenues and revenue projections. Build more hotels, and that, if the average price of the hotel is higher, then that number rises. So if you have less deficit, it, it changes back and forth. These red li, these red boxes were, when things were starting to get a little troublesome. Uh, you can see that, that, that total debt jumps under total debt service, uh, in, in twenty-twenty and twenty-one, but then you still have a little bit of a runout. Now, as we take money from the fund balance, it just runs it a year earlier. So look at this, this is what we have, this is what we use internally, there's not, this did not come down from Mount Sinai. Uh, we, we, uh, we change it and try to use it as a general planning tool going forward. So, uh, you can just keep that with all your other budget information. Yes, sir.
The, the red marker, we're twenty-twenty, near twenty-twenty. Can we refinance at that time? Our debt?
That would be ten years if we issue the debt in twenty eighteen, but I think so, though.
Okay, thank you.
And Mayor, that's all, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. We'll have the, uh, City Council reports, Ms. Craig?
Um, I don't really have a report, but I've got a cup, a question for Flip, probably. Uh, the article in the newspaper today on the, uh, road projects, the four road projects?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, was that accurate?
It, it, it was to a certain extent. Uh, the other piece to keep in mind, uh, we took a portion of the Union Road Geo-Bond funding to reduce the, the Geo-Bond debt. So, uh, to what extent Union Road gets built and or right-of-way, uh, acquired is still going to, that's going to come at a later date as these other projects, the final numbers come in and are built, but, uh, all, all in all, it was a fairly accurate article, yes, ma'am.
Well, I, I got a call on it, and I, and I said, well, I'm, I can't tell you right now, but I'll find out, so.
And I'll be glad to reread it again, looking at that level of, of detail, just to be sure there isn't something in there that jumps out as in that.
Okay. Uh, the other thing is, uh, I, I might be wrong on my dates, but, uh, Councilman Gallagher, you're going on your mission trip?
Yes.
And, and we will be thinking about you and very proud that you're doing that. Uh, and the best of luck. You leave when?
Leave the sixteenth, I think.
Sixteenth.
Well, not sixteenth, no, before that, thirteen, thirteen.
Come back the twenty-third.
Come back twenty-third, yeah.
Oh, okay. Well, good luck.
Personal secretary.
And we'll be thinking about you. That's my report.
Okay, McAtier? Okay, Mr. Pierceall?
I guess I'll need to say that, uh, attended the Blue Star Memorial Dedication with the mayor and, and Councilman McAtier, and that, that was a very nice dedication, and the plaque looks wonderful.
Yeah.
Out there in seventy-four, so, uh, good job to the garden clubs, keep Gastonia beautiful. Uh, there were several and multiple departments involved with that, so, very, very well done.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, I was at Memorial Day with you and, um, Councilman, uh, McAtier.
All right.
And his wife, uh, did a great job with, um, bringing out the wreath, uh, for, um, the- the Colonial Dames. Uh, she is, she's been voted President General of the Colonial Dames throughout the whole United States. She is it. Um, was at the Grizzlies game. Uh, the next game they have is this Friday, it's for Faith Fun Friday. So come on out. It was a great time. I was there for, um, uh, their, their opening game. The other thing is, Ash, how much money do we have for the Legion?
The same as last time, there haven't been any significant growth in those contributions, so y'all get out and shake the bushes, please.
Um, the other thing is, I was a little skeptical, uh, a while back when we were voting on, um, giving money to the, um, Rotary Club to run the Friday night's dances, um, downtown. Well, I was encouraged to go, and I was very surprised how well, I don't know if you could see that, but-
Yeah, I can see you were surprised.
Yeah, well, anyway, it was, they had a bunch of music going on, uh, a lot of people, uh, from Gastonia itself. Um, the nice thing about the crowd, it was crowded, it was packed. There's a lot of energy, a lot of people, they had beer downtown, uh, you know, nobody was, yeah, Porter was there, um, I, I was walking around a little bit, and I saw Todd, too. Um, and I'm so thankful we gave the money to, uh, the Rotary to do this. Um, the food before, yeah, exactly, um, the, um, there was food at the conference center that, um, Julius and his crew put together for people that wanted to, to go and, um, snack before they went to there. Um, it was just terrific. I mean, I saw a lot of people downtown, a lot of energy, I'm glad they're doing it. Um, I can't wait for the next one, uh, even though I'll be in Honduras. Uh, anyway, I'll have to wait until another one. But anyway, thank you very much for helping me with the mission trip to Honduras. Thank you to the Rotary Club because they've supplied the water, uh, for the Chorty Indians out there, and I'll tell you, it means a lot when you start seeing little kids that were in bad dire straits years back, but now are surviving. And it's thanks to the Rotary Club and all its members and all their, the vision that they had, and I just want to say thank you. And that is it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Doctor.
Just, just one follow-up on, uh, yeah, the last concert with the Band of Oz. Um, at, uh, at the Rotary meeting on Monday, our Rotary president said he had estimated about three thousand people, I don't know if Chief, if you had gotten, I know crowd estimates are so difficult, but, um, but, uh, that was a number that was bantered around, was about three thousand people. And, and he had spoken with a lot of people, and then there was a lot of people, uh, from out of ti, town, you know, Mooresville, um, Huntersville, Monroe, and I think that was probably, as a result of that particular band, the draw that, that brought to downtown. So, um, yeah, so I, like you, um, appreciate the, the city's support of the Rotary and that, you know, that whole program. Hopefully, it continues to improve and get good crowds, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, one thing, we have two, uh, two auto bells in, in our city, um, and, uh, they will be hosting the Eleventh Annual Auto Bell Summer Games to see how the folks that staff our car washes, uh, stack up against those from the different states in which they have auto bells. So we certainly wish our fellow Gastoniaites, uh, the majority of them, uh, live and work and attend school in our area, and we wish them well. And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you, sir.
We were just looking at storms coming right there. Um, the nineteen, two weeks from this Friday, uh, some of us will be going to Springfield with the, um, uh, Legion. I think they're going in, last I heard, now, they were, the, the team's going to go in a sort of a limo-type van.
Big bus.
Bus, uh, with the, with the TV and all that in it, so. Uh, at the West Something College, it's a cop dorm, um, it's, it's West Massachusetts, it's, it's not Springfield College, it's another name.
Yes, they, they have a college, it's right there.
It's right there.
Yeah, right there at-
Yeah, right, right near the- Brenda and, and Sydney and, uh, Todd and, um, Chuck and me.
Rachel.
And Rachel and, uh, someone else. Chuck. And of course, several from the, and then they got, they got, the coaches got them ready to go, and they're all excited, the boys, yeah, they really are.
And some, some folks from Legion, too, and, and-
Yeah. Oh, and some, and some, some parents are going also. That's the nineteenth through Father's Day, the twenty-first, and, uh, at long last, uh, I don't know if I'll ever be back, but, uh, we, we're, Nan and I are going to go to Germany, Gota, and, uh, see our sister city because they made me feel bad if I didn't come because the streets could be named Gastonia Street.
Wow.
They're naming the street after Gastonia over there.
Have some, um, Brewmaster, is it, Hofbrau?
Well-
Wiener Schnitzel?
See, the beer's okay with the president here, I don't know what to bet. No, seriously. Um, but that's, it's going to be a busy time, but thank y'all, everyone, and, oh, two quickies, well, that was one of them. Uh, the other one is, uh, if anyone were to ask you, and Brenda, you brought up that article in the paper on the front page today. Uh, it, it named a hang-up in there. Where in the world that came from? I've been called lots of things, but not, uh, was that the word? Was it hang-up or what?
Yes, sir, that was, that was the reporter's word.
That was the reporter's word. Um, that the mayor was sort of holding up the, the, the New Hope Road widening, and, uh, that, I, that I had an interest in a shopping center. And that, uh, my, even if my partners and I chose to take the offer, which we did, I mean, whatever they said, uh, that it'd have to be signed by a judge. Well, that's the same thing we talked about before. That ha, that quote-unquote shopping center, is it, that's Alan Tate Building?
And that's a shopping center now?
That's a shopping center, that's a shopping center.
People shop for real, so it's-
Well, I guess so.
Really?
A, a shopping center, and, uh, my partners, well, I've been living with her a long time, is, that's my, in the bank, but, and, uh, but we bought it twenty-two years ago, so don't let anybody, I know what they're probably thinking, but, uh, we didn't just buy it when we found out the, the weight road was going to be what, they were going to put us sidewalk in front of, that's all they're doing is, in mind, so. Um, but that's, that's what they were, I don't know where that came from, but, uh, oh, well, but, uh, life goes on. Thank y'all very much, and, uh, be careful, everyone going home. It looks, looking at that tree right there, it's, it's pretty rough right now. Yeah, it's, yeah, better get home quick.
If you can pass these out, sir. Thank you.